We're in our newly-elected town moderator. Mr. Hiss.
I, Robert G. Hiss.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully...
That I will faithfully...
And impartially.
And impartially.
Discharge and perform.
Discharge and perform.
All duties incumbent upon me.
All duties incumbent upon me.
As town moderator.
As town moderator.
That I will bear true faith...
That I will bear true faith...
In allegiance.
And allegiance.
And will uphold...
And will uphold...
And defend...
And defend.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
The Constitution of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
The bylaws of the town of Milton.
The bylaws of the town of Milton.
And that I will fairly...
And that I will fairly...
Inequitably.
And equitably.
Execute the laws thereof.
Execute the laws thereof.
Within the extent of my authority?
Within the extent of my authority?
And jurisdiction.
And jurisdiction.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you very much.
(Applause).
Thank you.
Mr. Moderator.
Ah, thank you.
He's got a nice ring.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Very quickly, and your moderator has not opened the meeting, but I wanted to pass the Pierce gavel on to the moderator. Town meeting, not only in this town, but in every town that recognizes town meeting, is always rich with tradition. For example, this podium that we're standing behind. Every moderator who's presided over a town meeting in Milton for the last 135 years has done so behind this podium. And in addition, I have a gavel. It's kind of a special gavel. It's called the Pierce gavel. It's named after two former moderators. The Pierce family, by the way, is rich in history in the town. It's named after Edward L. Pierce, who began serving as moderator in 1861. He served three times for a total of 32 years through 1897. Let me tell you, folks, 32 years is a long time.[130.72][130.72](Laughter). His son, Charles Sumner Pierce, who also, by the way, has a school, a middle school in town, is named after him. His son served from 1920 until 1949. Actually, he served right up until his passing for another 29 years. And this gavel was left in their memory. It's inscribed on the band with their names and the years of service. And we want to continue the tradition of having the moderator take this gavel and preside over town meetings. So, Bob, my pleasure.
Thank you very much. Before I declare the meeting open, I just wanted to make a couple comments for Brian. I've made the bed that now I must lie in. I'll make mistakes, but will certainly be trying. Before I stumble and fall, I'll shout out a call to our outgoing moderator, Brian. For 14 years, he's been helping you choose. He's been neutral, never injecting his own views. Will you join me to cheer? A moderator without peer, I just hope I can fill his big shoes. And that's the meeting will now come to order. So, folks, again, my name is Bob Hiss. I'm proud to be your new town moderator. Welcome to town meeting. We have a few orders of business to take care of first. Will the membership please stand and remain standing until requested to take a seat? So first tonight, we have with us student members of the Milton High School Chorus, who will be singing the National Anthem. So, the Milton High School Chorus. Thank you very much. I think I'd rather listen to them than listen to me. So also, in keeping with our tradition, we'll start our meeting with the pledge of allegiance to the flag. Please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And please remain standing a moment longer. The meeting will now open with an invocation by the Reverend Dr. Joyce Cagiano, Associate Rector of my own St. Michael's Episcopal Church in Milton. I very much appreciate Reverend Cagiano taking some time from her busy schedule to join us. Reverend?
Thank you very much. Thank you. Teddy Roosevelt once said that leadership requires too simple and sometimes challenging virtues: honesty and courage. All of you have earned the right to be here tonight by winning the trust of the people of Milton. Along with that honor comes the responsibility of integrity and public service. So let us settle our hearts for a moment in prayer. God of justice and mercy, we thank you for the opportunity to serve the people of Milton. We thank you for those who teach and those who protect, for those who clean and those who repair, for those who work in parks and those who work on roads, for those who plan and those who make the plans happen, for those who heal and those who counsel. Help us to act with character and conviction, honesty and courage. Help us to listen with understanding and goodwill. Help us to speak with clarity, charity, and restraint. Give us a spirit of service. Remind us that we are stewards of your creation. Guide us to be the leaders your people need. Help us to see the humanities of those who disagree with us and to treat all persons, no matter how weak or poor, with the reverence your creation deserves. And finally, renew us with the strength of your presence and the joy of helping to build a community worthy of the human family. We ask this as your sons and daughters, confident in your goodness and love. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Cagiano. Now, with all the remaining, the town meeting members, please remain standing in order that the town clerk, who will join me over here at the podium, may give them their oath of office. And again, please remain standing until requested to take a seat. We're almost done.
If everybody could raise their right hand, please, and repeat after me. I state your name.
I.
Hereby swear and affirm...
Hereby swear and affirm.
That I will faithfully and impartially...
Faithfully and impartially.
Discharge and perform...
Discharge and perform.
All duties incumbent upon me...
All duties incumbent upon me.
As a town meeting member...
As a town meeting member.
For the town of Milton...
For the town of Milton.
To uphold the general laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts...
To uphold the general laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
The bylaws of the town of Milton...
The bylaws of the town of Milton.
And the Constitution of the United States, so help you God.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
Thank you.
Lastly, will the new town meeting members please remain standing while the existing ones take their seats? So, folks, to see your front, these are our new town meeting members.[596.79][596.79](Applause). The clerk, you may take a seat. Thank you. The clerk informed me that we had 27 this election cycle, which is about 10 percent of our memberships. I think it's a terrific statement for their volunteerism. Glad they're here. Having been advised by the town clerk that a majority of town meeting members are in attendance, I hereby declare that a quorum is present for the transaction of business. Before proceeding with the business of the meeting, however, there are certain preliminary matters to be taken up. I'll read them in order. First, permission has been requested for certain members and personnel of the school committee, the planning board, the Board of Health, and other boards seated down in front of you, who are not town meeting members, to sit on the floor with other members of their respective boards, committees, and departments, upon the understanding, of course, that they will not vote. Hearing no objection from the body, such permission will be, and hereby is, accorded. Second, permission is granted to Milton Cable Television up there in the booth, and as you see around us, to televise these proceedings. Also, please note that there is, there are two side aisle microphones here and here, each with three seats in the front reserved for those waiting to be recognized to speak. Third, I'll now review briefly, particularly for the benefit of the new town meeting members, some of the procedural rules for the conduct of the meeting, which unless there is objection, will be the rules for the conduct of the meeting. First, town meeting members are required to check in with the town clerk and to be seated in the lower part of the auditorium, down below that center aisle, which is demarcated and reserved for town meeting members. Town citizens and others who are not town meeting members are required to be seated in the upper part of the auditorium. Second, any town meeting member wishing to speak to any article or pending related matter will first go to the nearest microphone, and upon being recognized by the moderator, will identify herself or himself by giving his or her name and precinct. If you have not been recognized by the moderator, you're not permitted to speak to the meeting. On occasion, members will informally alert the moderator that they desire to be recognized to speak on a certain article. And while your moderator will attempt to remember who desires to be recognized on any article, please be advised that the only way in which a member can be sure to be recognized is to come down to the microphone and wait to be recognized. Third, by longstanding tradition, while any other registered voter of the town who is not a town meeting member may not vote here at town meeting, he or she may be recognized to address town meeting. We have some tonight, providing that the voter in advance of the particular session has obtained permission from the moderator. Fourth, relating to conflict of interest, any person having a monetary or equitable interest in, or who was employed as an attorney, or otherwise by any person interested in any matter under discussion, shall disclose that fact of his or her interest or employment before speaking thereon. And fifth, with reference to each article in the warrant, the recommendations of the warrant committee shall ordinarily be considered to have been presented in the form of a motion by the chairperson of the warrant committee, which has been seconded by the secretary or other member of the warrant committee who was a town meeting member. So unless the moderator otherwise expressly states at the time, the question to be voted on under each article will usually be whether or not to accept the recommendation of the warrant committee. In other words, generally, the recommendation of the warrant committee is the main motion pending under the article. In the event that the warrant committee recommends a no vote on an article, the question will be presented as a vote on a motion made and seconded to approve the article. So, members will vote yes if they favor the article and no if they oppose the article, as the warrant committee had recommended. Sixth, pursuant to section four of chapter two of the town's bylaws, the moderator requires that all substantive or complex motions be reduced to writing and presented to the moderator before submission to the meeting. Seventh, by longstanding tradition, Town Meeting Time, which is a Handbook of Parliamentary Law, third edition, will, in addition to the bylaws of the town of Milton and the laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, be the rules of order of this meeting. Eighth, any member desiring to show slides, make a PowerPoint presentation, or any other visual material before the meeting must make appropriate arrangements and inform the moderator. Ninth, members are urged to obtain all information needed by them prior to the meeting. However, by tradition, the moderator will recognize any town meeting member for the purpose of requesting additional information relevant to the matter under consideration. All such requests must be directed solely to the moderator, who will attempt to ascertain the most appropriate official who should answer such an inquiry. Answers will not be provided while the member still has the floor in order to prevent the temptation to cross-examine the person providing that information, which is not permitted. However, the moderator will separately recognize the member once for the purpose of posing a follow-up question, and sometimes the information is not available or is not immediately available, and the request for information will simply not be fulfilled. Tenth, when it is announced by the moderator that the meeting will proceed to vote, debate will be closed and the pending question will be put to town meeting. Eleventh, upon a question being put to town meeting, the moderator will first determine by voice vote the sense of the meeting. If the moderator is unable to decide by the sound of the voices, or if his announcement of the vote is doubted by seven town meeting members standing in their place, the moderator shall then proceed to have a standing vote on the question. If the vote is further doubted by 25 town meeting members standing in their places, then there'll be a roll call of the meeting with the town clerk calling the name of each town meeting member in alphabetical order, and each town meeting member, upon his or her name being called, shall rise in place and answer yes or no. Twelfth, no vote shall be considered at the same meeting except upon a motion made within one hour of the adoption of such vote, unless by two-thirds vote, provided that the time which elapses during any adjournment of the meeting shall be excluded in computing the hour since the adoption of the vote. Thirteenth, because of the constraints of state law pursuant to Proposition Two and a Half, the budget articles, as recommended by the warrant committee to this town meeting, are at the maximum tax levy limitation permitted by state law pursuant to Prop. Two and a Half. While the moderator will entertain motions to amend budget articles upward, the town's total appropriation may not exceed the Prop. Two and a Half limit. Thus, to avoid potential chaos and the necessity for additional meetings to balance the town's appropriation within the levy limit, on the amount of revenue that the town may raise by property tax, your moderator both urges and expects that any member offering an upward amendment to the budget article will also, for the benefit of fellow town meeting members, specify an offsetting decrease in some other line item, or specify what additional source of revenue is or will be available. In addition, it is also permissible to make increased funding subject to an override ballot vote by the registered voters of the town. Fourteenth, each person speaking to an article or amendment is limited to 10 minutes, and no person may speak on a question more than once when any other person desires to be heard, or more than twice on the same question without permission of the town moderator. Pre-approved presentations will not necessarily be limited to 10 minutes at the discretion of the moderator. When you do come down in front, I would encourage you to speak clearly. If you need to adjust the microphone, please do, so that everyone can hear what's said in the back and we can avoid any miscommunication. Hearing no objection, these will be the procedural rules for the meeting. So, certain matters coming before the town meeting requires a two-thirds vote. In accordance with chapter 448 of the Acts of 1996, I will entertain the following procedural motion, which allows the moderator to declare that a two-thirds majority vote has occurred. The motion is, "On matters requiring a two-thirds vote by statute, account need not be taken unless the vote so declared is immediately questioned by seven or more voters as approved in General Laws, Chapter 39, Section 15."
(Overlapping conversation).
Is there a second?
(Overlapping conversation).
Then I'll call for a vote. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion is unanimous. Some observations, this year, we have several articles that will require a two-thirds vote. I'll inform you of those before we vote on the motions. And one last item I will note that is in your warrant. We have strong fragrances, and fragrances containing carcinogenic ingredients have, can cause adverse significant reactions in some people, such as migraine headaches. Products with strong fragrances include personal care products, perfume colognes, hair products, et cetera. Some attendees at town voting, meeting are requesting to avoid products with strong fragrances. As an accommodation to those persons with such adverse reactions and to allow safe and free access to the auditorium, the attendees at town meeting who are wearing products with strong fragrances are requested, or who think they may be wearing those products with strong fragrances, are requested to sit away from the sections near this lobby entrance, just so if people have to get out and get some fresh air, they can do so unimpeded. And just checking, is Representative Timmeltie in the room tonight? Not yet. Okay. Very good. Then let us proceed to town meeting. So, Article One. "To hear and act upon the report of the town accountant and other town officers and committees," this is submitted by the Board of Selectmen, "recommended that the town vote to accept the report of the town accountant." But first, we have some reports to make. I'd like to recognize, do you have something? First, my... Like to recognize Lee Michael McLean, the chairman of the warrant committee, who's going to present the warrant committee's report.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Lee Michael McLean, town meeting member, precinct 10, and chair of your warrant committee. Tonight, I will present for your consideration the warrant committee's process over the past few months, highlights of the budgets we considered, a few interesting observations, and some questions for you to consider as we begin to look forward to fiscal year 18, believe it or not. If you have not already done so, I encourage you to read the report of the warrant committee on pages 11 to 20 of the warrant. It not only gives a roadmap for reading the warrant, it goes into much more detail than I will be able to tonight. The slides I'm about to go through are now loaded on the town meeting page on the town of Milton website, in case you want to follow along on your handheld device or reference them after the meeting. Let's begin by looking at the warrant committee's recommendation before you tonight, as presented in the warrant. For anyone new to the process, the warrant committee is appointed by the moderator. We meet throughout most of the year and create a budget forecast in November and December, which we determine, which will determine the levels of funding that we request from department heads. That forecast is continually refined as new information becomes available. And as you will see later on in this presentation, sometimes that new information can dramatically change the course of the budget. This year, department heads were asked to submit two different budgets: a non-contingent budget, which kept all costs level, except for those costs which were contractually required to increase, and a contingent budget, the basis for an override, which would have increased the department, with increases the department heads felt were necessary to appropriately provide the service to community. The warrant committee met with department heads over several months to consider their requests and investigate savings opportunities. We created two versions of the budget, and after careful consideration of the needs of Milton and the pressures on our departments and the length of time since we invested in many key areas, the warrant committee endorsed a contingent budget and presented it to the Board of Selectmen, the school committee, and other departments for consideration. As I'm sure you saw on Milton Access Television, read in the Milton Times, and perhaps even Facebooked about, the contingent budget elicited a less-than enthusiastic response from our town leaders, primarily because they didn't perceive a groundswell of public support for an override. An oft cited explanation for that lack of support was the fact that, under this non-contingent budget scenario that we were looking at, the town would not have had to lay off any staff in fiscal year 17, unlike the last override, when the threat of cutting 40 teachers and several public safety personnel and other staff presumably helped to sell the public in passing an override. The warrant committee debated heavily over what course to take, and we eventually decided to abandon a contingent budget for fiscal year 17, not because we didn't think that it was necessary, and not because of the Board of Selectmen and the school committee and other departments didn't think it was necessary, but because the potential consequences of pushing an override vote forward and having it fail at the ballot box were too high, given the level of support that we saw. We went back to the non-contingent budget and created the warrant that we will use tonight. While a non-contingent budget tends to look a lot like the budget from the year before, there are some key differences that I would like to call out. On the savings table, I'll note that our Consolidated Services Department signed a significantly favorable energy contract with savings on gas and electricity. Thank you very much to that department. We will have $50,000 reduction in tuition to the Blue Hills Regional Technical School due to a decrease in enrollment. Our overlay release came in at about $60,000 higher than we typically expect. The general insurance budget was tightened another $50,000. And free cash, while down significantly from last year at $2.1 million, still provided us opportunities to make significant one-time investments. So what did we do with those savings? At the request of the Board of Selectmen, we recommended an increase to the law budget of nearly $90,000, primarily to cover the assumed cost of airplane noise mitigation. Through a creative funding agreement with the Milton Public School Administration, we were thrilled to be able to support taxpayer-funded full-day kindergarten.[1455.04][1455.04](Applause). More detail on that will be provided later in the presentation and is included in the warrant. We recommended a $75,000 increase to the fire department overtime line, which unfortunately only meets half of the fire chief's reasonable request. A new line was added to the consolidated facilities budget for projects and repairs. Warrant committees for the past few years have been funding consolidated facility projects with one-time funds, and we were pleased to be able to partially fund what we think should be a $100,000 permanent line item in this highly successful and efficient department. And lastly, as in past years, the warrant committee provided budget relief to several departments with retiring staff by funding sick leave buybacks. This slide demonstrates how much more money the warrant committee had to allocate this year over last year. I'll draw your attention to the bottom two numbers. For fiscal year 17, excluding enterprise funds, we had $2,696,000 more to allocate over the previous year. That may sound good, but compare that to the last line, which shows that we had more than $7 million in new requests. That is where the warrant committee comes in and where the people to my right each spent nearly 100 hours of volunteer time over the past year. If you wouldn't mind, please join me in thanking them tonight.[1542.25][1542.25](Applause). The chief assessor always cautions that these numbers are subject to change, but this should be a close approximation of the average tax bill, and I know folks look forward to the slide. The first step is to calculate the total amount to be raised from property taxes each year. So we take the total amount to be raised to pay for all expenditures, line A, and then we deduct all other sources of revenue, such as state aid, local receipts, et cetera, line B, to arrive at the tax levy, which is line C. The assessors and selectmen determine the percentage split between residential, business, and other classes that comprise taxable property. The percentage for residential class is 93.66, line D. This means that of the $73.8 million to be raised, $69.1 million is to be raised from residential taxes. So we take the total residential valuation, as determined by the assessors, line F, and do some straightforward division to get the tax rate per $1,000 of residential assessed value, line G. Lastly, we calculate the tax bill. In this example, we have averaged assessed value for a single-family home on H, so we divide it by 1,000 and multiply the result to get, by the tax rate, to get our estimated tax bill, line I. That 8,392 tax estimate is pretty close to where we were last year, and actually a little better than we were able to predict with the information that we had when the warrant went to the printer. So you'll notice that this number is about $70 less than the one cited in the report of the warrant committee. To estimate your own personal tax bill, you can follow a simpler process. Take the assessed value of your house in fiscal year 16. In this case, I'm going to use $600,000 as an example on line A. Add 6% in growth, which is the average growth for the whole town. In this case, that would give me a new projected assessed value of $636,000 on line C. Divide that number by 1,000 and multiply by the tax rate of 13.11, and you will have your estimated fiscal year 17 tax. And don't forget, these slides are on the website, in case you want to reference them later. Let's take a look at a few financial charts now. This chart shows Milton's rank among the towns with the 50 highest average family tax bills. Note, this chart goes through 2015 only because the Commonwealth has yet to approve every town's tax rate. The average tax bill in Milton, in relation to other towns in the Commonwealth, has fallen since the '90s, and for the past few years, we have come in around number 38, or 39, or 40. Here's our net state aid picture since 1981. It took us a while to get back to the pre-recession level era of 2009, but we have had three years of steady increases now. I can't help but notice that this graph has two significant dips, and while past performance is not indicative of future results, significant reduction in the future is always a possibility to be on the lookout for. In terms of revenue over the past 16 years, you can see that state aid and local receipts have grown by only about 1% annually since 2001, while we have become increasingly reliant on property tax. The blue line at the top. It is encouraging to see the red line, local receipts, ticking up significantly over these past two years. You can see here our total revenue pie and how it comes together. 78% is derived from property taxes. State aid makes up 11%, and local receipts 8%. On the next slide, you'll see how this picture has changed over the past 16 years. Since 2001, residential taxes have grown as a percentage of our total revenue picture, while all other funding sources have decreased in relation to residential taxes. One way to look at expenses over time is to see how their share of the total budget may have changed. Here, you can see how expenses are allocated across our largest budgets. On the next slide, I'll show you the change over the past 16 years. Since 2001, all department budgets have grown. However, as a percent of our... However, as a percent of our total spend, insurance and retirement are up significantly, while the percent spend on schools, fire, police, and public works have actually decreased Looking again at Insurance General, the purple line, and Group Insurance, the blue line, you can see how they have risen dramatically since 2001. It is worth noting, however, that both of these budgets have leveled off over the past few years. This leveling off has been a significant contributing factor, enabling us to avoid an override for so long. Is this the calm before another dramatic increase? Unfortunately, again, only time will tell. And as for our last financial chart, let's take a look at the largest four budgets. The dark blue line in the very middle of the pack is the trend for total expenditures. Descending from the top, DPW is the brown line. Milton Public Schools is the green line. Fire is the red line, and the police budget is represented by the light blue line on the bottom. The DPW line appears to have significant fluctuation, however, this budget has experienced significant changes over the years, as explained by the box on the screen. The most recent dip from last year is due to the creation of the Stormwater Utility earlier this year. The police and fire lines are artificially flat for the very last data point because they have not yet settled their employment contracts, but those lines will normalize soon. I'd like to take a few minutes now and discuss the budget that didn't end up coming before you tonight, the contingent budget. It is likely that this will be time very well spent because it will be the basis and preparation for a future override. In early March, the Warrant Committee voted to endorse the contingent budget that you see on the screen. Our recommendation at the time was an override of $2.9 million. As noted earlier, this amount would have only satisfied about 40% of the pent-up funding requests that we received for fiscal year 17. The contingent budget we approved included funding for two librarians. The library is the victim of its own success. They have seen phenomenal growth in visits and usage, but staffing hasn't nearly kept up. At times, there is only one staff member available per floor of the library, which leaves patron questions unanswered and, at critical times, many unsupervised schoolchildren. The cemetery is growing, and their budget has not kept pace to replace trees and necessary equipment. Our roads are in tough shape. Each year, we spend approximately 1/3 of what we should spend to repair our roads. That means we fall further and further behind every year. The Warrant Committee feels strongly that the next override should include a dedicated line for annual funding of road repairs to keep better pace with their degradation. $700,000 a year would not be enough, but it would be a good start and a heck of a lot better than we're doing right now. Stabilization funds are here to stay, and they should be funded with reoccurring revenue each year, not dependent upon the availability of free cash, as they have been. And for the next two budgets, the departments under the Board of Selectmen and the schools, I have details on the next two slides. Our Inspection Services Department is about to have its first million-dollar revenue year. This is a fantastic accomplishment considering how understaffed they are. Currently, many citizens' complaints simply go unanswered because there isn't anyone available to follow up, which is why we supported the addition of the Code Enforcement Officer. Now, even before the creation of our strong town administrator position, the office of the administrator has been understaffed, and that burden is about to grow. It is clear that we need a new assistant town administrator to keep pace with the daily workload. Far too much is expected of our current staff, and it's a wonder we've been able to hold on to them as long as we have. Losing dedicated, educated staff will only increase the burden on others, so this investment is a top priority for our town. That said, our Police Department has needed two new patrol officers for years. Our population has grown, our schools and nonprofits have been -- the complexity of policing our schools and nonprofits has increased dramatically, but the size of the police force has not. Here, we suggested funding only one of two requested officers due to competing priorities, but a strong case could be made for filling both of those positions. The DPW needs funding for two positions. The Council on Aging is doing amazing things with the staff they have, but bringing their outreach coordinator from part-time to full-time is easily justifiable, given the needs of our community. We can assess our town much more efficiently, which has many benefits, but it costs money, as you can see here. We have ancient historic records in the Town Clerk's Office that will soon be in danger of disintegrating, even though we're obliged to maintain them, and general expenses have been held flat for years. That demand is not going away. As I mentioned earlier, consolidated facilities is a huge success story. The maintenance and repairs line makes imminent sense and should be funded at $100,000 a year as soon as possible. Of course, filling all of these positions noted would affect our wage set-asides in Group Insurance, and that is accounted for here as well. Now, as for the schools, the picture may not be as bleak on this slide as we have invested in advancement budgets for the schools over the past few years, but reductions were made, and we promised to put them back this year, and we failed to do that. Last year, to meet the noncontingent budget, art, music, physical education, and a history teacher were all reduced. We said that we would replace them during the next override. Until then, we have nibbled away again at what makes our schools great. There are additional, well-justified needs for sped teachers, math specialists, and an adjustment counselor. Other reduction in the budget in the past have come directly at the expense of our schoolchildren who ride the bus or wish to participate in athletics or clubs. The fees to ride the bus and participate in sports or clubs have become prohibitively expensive for far too many students, and those fees need to be reduced. The last item on this list, full-day kindergarten, is a bright spot, as we heard earlier. We were able to use free cash to support the inaugural year of this program, which will be funded primarily through increased Chapter 70 funding in future years. But as you know, we are not here asking for $2 million in override, and here is why. Between November and mid-February, our budget outlook changed dramatically. We went from looking at $2 million in cuts to meet a noncontingent budget to meeting a noncontingent budget with no staff cuts at all. This happened because property taxes grew more than we expected them to. Group insurance was flat again. Local aid was surprisingly up again. The special town meeting in February approved the Stormwater Utility, which removed half a million dollars from the budget, and local revenue exceeded expectations by more than $260,000. Suddenly, we went from a conversation about how reasonable we could keep an override to how we should just try to get by for one more year with a noncontingent budget again. It seems that when the staff cuts went away, any political will to bring an override to the voters vanished, which brings me to my last point. It's clear to the Warrant Committee, after hours of discussions, that our staff is stressed and stretched beyond what is reasonable. It's been seven years since the last override, and that override didn't even bring relief to many of our departments. It simply staved off massive cuts to our schools and public safety, because when you wait until you need to cut 40 positions, the cost of that override is so high that there is then pressure not to do the other things that you need to do to keep the cost of the override down. You push them off, as we have for far too long. We have pent-up demand for many things, as I outlined in this presentation. The question that I would like you to think about over the next few months is, what if we are looking at just barely making it again next year with no cuts or minimal staff cuts? Do we put off the inevitable again and continue to chip away at our town, or do we invest in our town? As the Warrant Committee signaled with our vote in March, we think it's time to replace lost capacity, address our failing infrastructure, and advance Milton so it can continue to be one of the best places to live in the United States. But our officials get to hear from the Warrant Committee all the time, so our position is known. Please make sure you share your opinions, too, because that is the only way that we will know the will of the voters. Thank you for listening, and thank you to everyone who participated in this cooperative budget process. It is certainly a town-wide effort. Have a great Town Meeting.
From time to time, we're visited by some of our elected representatives, and tonight we have two. I'd like to recognize Congressman Stephen Lynch. Congressman Lynch was elected to the United States Congress in 2001, following the passing of Congressman John Joseph Mochley. My pleasure to introduce Congressman Lynch.
Thank you very much, Bob, and congratulations as well. Thank you for this brief opportunity to address Town Meeting. Normally, on Monday nights, I'm down in Washington, DC, but we're out on parole this week, I guess, and I have six Town Meetings, so I'm going to run right out of here when I'm done. I have another stop in Walpole. A lot going on in Washington this week. Sort of, it matches up what's going on at the state level with Walter Timmeltie and others on the opioid issue. So we are trying to basically do a follow-on to what Governor Baker has tried to do and the state legislature as well, which is provide some funding to towns, cities, and the state and our agencies to try to deal with that problem. I think it's a more effective use of taxpayer monies to actually give it to the localities rather than try this sort of effort from 100,000-foot level and impact the issue that way. But we have a lot of great agencies working on that, as well as first responders at the local level that I think could effectively use the resources. We have a half a dozen bills. This is a bipartisan bill. It's not one where we've got opposition, you know, based on whether a person's a Republican or a Democrat. We're all working on that. But like I said, there's probably a half dozen bills that are percolating through, and I think within the next few weeks, we'll have some type of amalgam of those six bills that will actually pass and get to the President's desk, and I know that he's eager to sign it. A few of the issues, a few weeks ago, we had an opportunity to address a big issue that has been affecting our returning veterans. As you know, many of our returning veterans, young men and women from Iraq and Afghanistan, are coming back and going to work for the federal government. I think we had 43,000 in the current year that have come back from military service overseas and have gone to work for the federal government, either for the Post Office or State Department, Defense Department, a bunch of agencies. The good news is, we're hiring a lot of returning vets. The bad news is that, as federal employees, they get no medical leave. So, for instance, I was just in, well, a while ago, I was in Kandahar and got to spend a little time with a rifle brigade, about 40 Marines. And I asked them, and it's a typical question I have of them, I just say, "How many are on your first tour?" And only a handful of hands went up. Then I said, "How many are on your second tour?" A few more hands. I got, "How many are on your third or fourth tour?" A bunch of hands went up. I got all the way to seven tours of duty before I ran out of Marines. So these young men and women, tour after tour after tour, they come back, they go to work for the federal government, they have no medical leave. So they're forced into a situation where they have to take off work without pay in order to go to the VA. It's ridiculous. So there's a gap there. So I drafted a bill, basically granting them 104 hours, what they would have earned anyway in their first year of employment. So now, and the President signed it into law, it's called the Wounded Warriors Federal Leave Act, and I had a lot of -- I don't want to take all the credit, I had a lot of help on the Republican side. Jason Chaffetz, a Republican from Utah, was of great help to me, and we got that done. But the President recently signed that into law, so now that our sons and daughters can at least get their medical care that they need. Another issue, just about a week and a half ago, we've been trying to get a POW/MIA memorial in the Capitol, and you might have seen them, they have them on -- some of our local towns have already adopted this. We have an empty chair, and it has the POW/MIA flag, and basically, it's an empty chair reminding, in this case, our leaders in Congress that, you know, we have about 83,000, sons and daughters of the United States that have not returned from World War II, from Korea, from Vietnam, and so this reminds them of their plight. And again, on this one, I had a lot of Republican help as well. It was a bipartisan bill, and about 10 days ago, the President signed that into law. So now that, every single day, members of Congress, House and Senate, will walk by that chair and remember that we have some sons and daughters out there that have not returned and that those families are still waiting. So it's a good reminder of that. Thirdly, well, thank you. I'm not sure if you remember this case, but I've been working on this for a few years. We had a young man named Glenn Daugherty. Glenn Daugherty, Massachusetts kid, Navy SEAL, multiple tours in Iraq and Afghanistan, also served for the CIA as a contractor in Libya. He died on the roof of the Benghazi compound in Benghazi about three years ago, and on September 12th, the morning after the, well, the morning of the attacks. In spite of his service and in spite of the fact that he has spent about $7,000 in insurance as a debt benefit for his family, because of a quirk in the Defense Base Act of 1941, he was not allowed, his family was not allowed to collect benefits. So all the folks that were killed that day got their benefits, except for Glenn Daugherty. So I drafted a bill called the Glenn Daugherty Contract Fairness Act that would provide the benefits to his family. And we received word about a week ago that the CIA has agreed to abide by the terms of the bill and that his family will get the $400,000 in death benefits that he rightly deserves, so doing the right thing for him. And I know we have some folks from K&L Gates that are from Milton, and Amy Canavale was a pro bono attorney that worked on that, and she deserves a great amount of credit. She really did a fantastic job working with my staff and helping everything go in the right direction. Like I say, it took far too long. I want to talk about the airplane noise, just for a minute. As you know, the Massport and the FAA put out a letter. I sent it to everybody who was at that FAA meeting, which was most of Milton, and basically explained that they had provided some short-term relief to towns like Situate, Hull, Hingham, Cohasset, where those flights were coming over those towns. They moved them about a mile offshore. Didn't do a heck of a lot for the Town of Milton, however, because we're still getting that overflights. Patriots Day weekend, I got 392 emails from people from Milton, just from Milton, about the overflights. So when I got back to Washington, and I've been trying to work with these people to get them to spread these flights out, and they have not been responsive. So on the Tuesday, well, Wednesday, I got back after the Patriots Day weekend, after getting all those emails, I filed a bill. It had been in the works for a while, but I had been holding it off to see if they would cooperate, but obviously, they're not cooperating. The Airplane Impact Mitigation Act, it addresses noise, it's a health study. So we're going to have Harvard School of Public Health is going to do a study on Milton and all the areas that are being impacted by the airplane noise and emissions. But they're not only going to do it for that, we're also going to have other universities, schools of public health in Chicago, in New York, Phoenix. So I named five cities that are heavily impacted, and then the FAA gets to add three other cities at their discretion. So we filed that. I got 22 cosponsors, Republicans and Democrats, mostly members of the Quiet Skies Caucus. So, look, they have to make this, they have to appoint, excuse me, they have to initiate the study within 180 days. And then they've got up to two years, but if they can do it faster, then it'll go faster. But basically, we're going to build a case to get rid of the RNAV Next Gen system that is overflying Milton. That's our goal. We want to get rid of that. So it won't be easy. It won't be easy. As you know, it took me a year to get a meeting with the FAA, so, but we are going to, we're going to stay at it. One of the great things I get to do is to appoint young men and women to the military academies, and the Town of Milton has had a long and strong history of sending its best and brightest to the U.S. Military Academies. I want to recognize a couple of them, not all of them, but a couple of them tonight. A lot of them have graduated since, but Griffith Hiss, United States Air Force Academy, Colorado Springs, Colorado, class of 2016, parents are Robert -- and Mary Hiss. Where did I hear that name before? Yeah, well, congratulations. Just for the record, he was not the moderator when I appointed his son. But it did work out. And also, Thomas Besseger, United States Military Academy at West Point, class of 2019. He's at 30 Gordon Road, Milton. His parents are Ed and Janet, another proud graduate of Milton High School. So you have Griffith Hiss, who was also a graduate of Milton High School. So that's especially reason to be proud. Look, I want to thank you for giving me the great honor of representing the Town of Milton in the United States Congress. Every day, I try to live up to your Every day, I try to live up to your highest expectations. I may not do that, but that's what I strive for, and God bless the town of Milton, and God bless these United States of America.
We also have here tonight Representative Walter Timmeltie of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, who's going to read a short proclamation.
Good evening. Would our former moderator, Mr. Walsh, please come forward for one last official time? Now, we all know that public service is a shared sacrifice. So this citation is dedicated to Laura. I all know what a wonderful team that you and Laura are, and we also know what a wonderful moderator you've been. You were great on the school committee, and you've been even better in this body. So this week, I offered this citation, and it states, "The Commonwealth of Massachusetts, the House of Representatives, be it hereby known to all that the Massachusetts House of Representatives offers its sincerest congratulations to our former moderator, Brian Walsh, in recognition of 14 years of dedicated service to the town of Milton as our town moderator. The entire membership extends its very best wishes and expresses the hope for future good fortune and continued success in all your endeavors, Brian. Given the second day of May 2016, at the State House, Boston, Mass., and signed by our Speaker of the House, Robert A. DeLeo, Daniel Cullenain, and offered by myself, Walter Timmeltie."
It's also customary to have a few brief remarks, brief remarks, by some of our standing committees. I'd like to first recognize Mr. Steve Moorash, who of our Firehouse Needs Study Committee, if I got all the nouns right.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Members of the Board of Selectmen, Warrant Committee, and fellow town meeting members. Really briefly, we've been, our committee's been working very hard over the last two years. We established a town meeting in the annual town meeting of 2014. We've been working very, very hard over the last six months. We started working with our consultant, Castle Booze Associates, about a year ago. And what we've been doing is having them review the report that we delivered to town meeting back in the fall town meeting of 2014. We want to make sure that the assumptions that we made during that report really still held some validity as we move forward with a process to propose to you in October of this year. They met with the Milton Fire Department to go over a needs assessment of what the Fire Department thought they needed to protect this town in the next century. They evaluated the sites that we currently have in town, the three fire stations. They were assessing those structures for rehabilitation as well as new construction. We toured firehouses with our committee that were designed and built by this company, notably in Foxborough and Holden, Massachusetts. And we are in the process of, I think, at that next meeting at the end of May, to come up with some preliminary cost estimates and some concept drawings that we can bring back to town meeting and to town people to take a look at what we're proposing to do with these fire stations. We are currently about to embark on a public education phase of this project. To do that, we will be conducting meetings over the course of the summer, relative locations to where these existing fire stations are. So we would expect it to be in Cunningham Park, hopefully at Milton High School here and at Fuller Village, in close proximity to the three fire stations that we have. We are going to start meeting with civic organizations, and I believe the first meeting is on May 25th with the Rotary Club. So we intend, and we encourage you to give us a call. And again, to meet with our town committees, make a presentation when available and ready for the Board of Selectmen, for the Warrant Committee, for the Capital Planning Committee, and any other committee that would like to hear what we're trying to do here. We are pretty close to developing and going live with a new webpage for this project that will be able to be accessed by all town residents. Hopefully, again, at the end of this month coming up, we'll have that. Our goal is to come back in the fall 2016 town meeting with a presentation to you, to let you know where we are, what we're doing, and how we're hope to get this town to move on this project. We would like to prepare an article for town meeting to create a Milton Fire Station Billing Committee. We've worked hard, we've looked long, and we think we need some additional help to make this project come to fruition. The committees worked very hard. I just want to mention one person in particular, Tom Kelly, he's a town meeting member from Precinct 7. He's added a lot to our committee work, and recently, due to some health issues and personal issues, he stepped off our committee. And I just want to, again, acknowledge not only the work of the other committee members, but Tommy's just a great guy, so I just know him, respect him, and I've got to know him a lot better over the last two years. So I'd like to say publicly, thank you, Tom, for all you've done for us.
Lastly, Andy Schmidt, who's the Chair of the Airplane Noise Awareness Committee,
Good evening, everyone. My name's Andy Schmidt, and I am the Chair of the ANAC Committee, Airplane Noise Advisory Committee, and our job is to advise the Board of Selectmen on... Can't hear me? Better? Okay. Now I can even hear myself. Okay. So our job is to advise the Board of Selectmen on what's happening in the town regarding the amount of airplane noise that we're experiencing and the amount of airplane pollution. One of the things that, so noise itself is just the symptom. That's the thing that we hear, that's the thing that we notice, but it's actually air pollution that's being rained down upon us as well. So what I wanted to do was to share with you the report that we shared with the Selectmen just last month, and give you an update on where some of the things stand. So some of the things that you may not know, Milton has filed more noise, or sorry, the most noise complaints out of any community for the last four years running. That is, and we have filed nearly 50% of all the noise complaints to date. The last few months have been particularly harsh, given the amount of traffic, the amount of arrivals that we've been having. And we've been hearing increasingly from people that it's disrupting their sleep, disrupting their lives. And so to put this into context, we filed more noise complaints than the next two most afflicted municipalities combined. And Congressman Lynch and Representative Timmeltie have been absolutely fantastic in helping us gain attention, in some cases, gain notoriety, for bringing this to people's attention and making them aware of the problem. Going further, we filed seven times as many noise complaints as our neighbors since 2012, and those neighbors being, for example, Waymouth, Hyde Park, Dorchester, Quincy, Canton, Dedham, Randolph, Branch Tree, and Mattapan, all towns that are just about as far away from Logan as we are, but get, but get, in many cases, just a fraction of the volume. We also have the most callers of any community, 158 individuals have called to file noise complaints. I'm expecting that number to increase dramatically for April. These are based off of the March numbers, just off of the traffic, the attention that it's been given recently. Just a quick show of hands, how many people are on Milton Neighbors? Okay. So you've seen the post going back and forth in terms of how to file a noise complaint, what some of the issues are. And for many of those who are on Milton Neighbors and saw the petition that was filed, some 500-plus emails. So Congressman Lynch talked about 392 emails coming out across Patriots' Day weekend. Over 500 emails were sent over this past weekend to raise awareness, to get people's attention, and it did get the FAA's attention. If, according to the conversation I had with Congressman Lynch's office just before coming here, the FAA said that they changed the pattern over the weekend to try and give us a break. Anytime somebody sends you 500 emails, you tend to pay attention, and our goal is to make this a sustained change, not just a momentary accommodation. Milton citizens are indeed suffering. So we're hearing stories about people having to resort to anti-anxiety medication, sleep medication, just to get a good night's sleep. And that is particularly troubling. A quick calculation of some of the lost sleep during one particularly brutal period came up to something like 405,000 hours of lost sleep among the citizenry of Milton, Massachusetts. Now, just to show this a bit more graphically, the red X is each day, or represents each day, that we had a significant amount of air traffic over the month of March. We haven't had a chance to go through the April numbers yet, but we're expecting that it's somewhat similar. And at one point, we had a 12-day stretch from March 19th to March 30th, and seven of the eight weekend days of the month had a considerable amount of air traffic. What's also particularly troubling is that nearly half of the hours, or nearly half of the hours for the month had some sort of air traffic in it, and we had 64%, almost 65% of our weekend hours had air traffic. And that brings us to some of the numbers on the bottom. We had an average of nine hours a day of air traffic during the month, 15 hours a day when you just look at the weekends, and we had an uninterrupted stretch of 91 straight hours, 91 straight hours of arrivals and departures coming over Milton, keeping people awake, disturbing their lives. So there are a couple of quick fixes. What you see here is called a vortex generator, it's also known as a flow deflector. One of the problems that we're experiencing is that the A320 series aircraft, which is used by JetBlue, American, United, Delta, Virgin, and others, has four little holes on the bottom of the wing. And upon descent, the wind starts to pass over those holes, makes a whistle, easily distinguishable whistle, it's that signature A320 whine. And there's a really easy fix, believe it or not. Eight bolts, about 10 hours' worth of time, about $7,000 to $10,000 per plane the airlines could retrofit to cut the noise by about half as they were landing. Combined weight, about that of an iPhone 6. So not a lot of, not a lot of weight impact, in fact negligible weight impact. The problem is will. So the European airlines, many of the European airlines have retrofitted their fleets with these deflectors. You can't even buy a new A320 without one, but the U.S. airlines have so far deferred, saying that we're working on it, but no defined timeframe. So we've listed a number of recommendations and action items, and the Board of Selectmen have been fantastic in terms of moving forward in some of these, and we do have some very strong momentum here. And, you know, not least of which is when the Deputy Regional Administrator, if I've got his title right, for the FAA calls Lynch's office and said, "Hey, you know, we heard you." So again, it's largely up to people like you in this room to help, to help spread the word, to help keep everyone informed in terms of what's going on. We are certainly going to continue the fight. We have a number of things that we think are reasonable, not least of which is to reduce the amount of noise, but also spreading the traffic out and having that traffic shared. Our point of view is we expect air traffic. Anyone living this close to Logan Airport should expect some air traffic. All we're asking for is our fair share. So thank you very much, appreciate the time.
So Article 1, it's recommended that the town vote to accept the report of the town accountant. Anyone wish to speak to this motion? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye. Opposed? Passed unanimously. Article 2, to see if the town will vote to authorize the collector of taxes to use all means of collecting taxes which a town treasurer, when appointed, collector may use, recommended that the town vote yes. Anyone wish to speak to this article? Seeing none, please signify by saying aye. Opposed? The article passes. Article 3, to see if the town will vote to authorize the town treasurer to enter into compensating balance agreements during the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2016, in accordance with the provisions of General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 53F, and to act on anything relating thereto, it's recommended that the town vote yes. Anyone wish to speak to this article? Hearing none, please signify your vote by saying aye. Or nay. It's unanimous. Article 4, to see if the town will vote to authorize the moderator to appoint a committee of five citizens to consider such proceedings of the legislature and state boards and commissions as may affect the interests of the town, and confer as they may think expedient with the Selectmen in regard to the employment of council to represent the town in any such proceedings, the members of such committee to hold office until the final adjournment of the next annual town meeting, until the appointment of any succeeding committee authorized at such meeting. It's recommended that the town vote yes. Anyone wish to speak to this article? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye. Opposed? It's unanimous. Article 5, to see if the town will vote to extend to December 1, 2019, the term of the Town Government Study Committee, appointed pursuant to the vote of October 2013, town meeting under Article 1, and to act on anything relating thereto. Chairman Neely of the Town Government Study Committee wishes to say just a few brief words.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Rick Neely, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 3, and Chairman of the Town Government Study Committee. Each of you, as a Town Meeting Member, should have received a report, our annual report sent out by the Town Clerk on our behalf on February 25th. If any of you did not receive that, please feel free to contact me, and we'll get you a paper copy if you don't have email. The committee itself is continuing to work on recommendations that have been provided in the Department of Revenue report, and it also continues to work on the series of topics that the Board of Selectmen and the town administrator have brought forward to us. We look forward to any suggestions or recommendations that you, as Town Meeting Members, have or any of the citizens of the town. And that's the reason that we continue to request that the committee be extended through 2019. I do want to thank the members of the committee, and that's John Cronin, that's Kathy Faganbauer, Marvin Gordon, Bob Hiss was on our committee and just resigned this past weekend. Also, we have Mary McNamara, we have Peter Mullin, we have Phil Matthews, and we have Leroy Walker. Thank you very much.
Anyone wish to speak to this article? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed? The article passes. Article 6, folks, is changed with a blue sheet, which you should have been able to pick up on the table on the way in. Everyone have their blue sheet? If you're colorblind, it's the gray sheet. Recommended that the town appropriate the sum of $3,374,160 to fund the capital projects listed below. I'll take the liberty of just summarizing, since there's a fair amount of detail. Subtotal recommended bonded capital items of $2,679,410. Subtotal recommended non-bonded capital items of $694,750, for a total capital of $3.3 million. And that, to meet said appropriation, the sum of $3,374,160 be appropriated for the purpose of financing the rehabilitation, replacement, or enhancement of the town's facilities and public safety equipment as described above, including costs... facilities and public safety equipment as described above, including costs incidental and related thereto, that the treasurer, with the approval of the Board of Selectmen, is authorized to sell and issue bonds or notes of the town aggregating not more than $2,679,410 in principal amount pursuant to the provisions of Chapter 44, Section 7 of the Mass General Laws. As amended or any other applicable law, and that the Board of Selectmen be and hereby is authorized to accept and expend, in addition to the foregoing appropriation, one or more grants and gifts from any other public or private funding source, and that the sum of $694,750 be raised from funds certified by the Department of Revenue as free cash. Does anyone wish to speak to this article? Yes, thank you. Mr. Collins.
I'm Town Meeting Member. Is this mic working?
It's now working.
Thank you. What I'd like to address are four-line items in this article. Water Enterprise Fund, two lines, Sewer Enterprise Fund, two lines. The reason I'd like to address these is because there's a horrible precedence that these suggest. And that precedence is that a fund owns physical assets. You don't own trucks. Funds don't own trucks. They don't own front-end loaders. These are enterprise funds that fund water and sewer. As all as this is, from my perspective, is just another hidden tax that's being added. And the reason I say that is this, because the funds that are required to purchase these assets will be paid for out of increases in every Town Meeting Member, every Town Resident, in their water bills and their sewer bills. There's going to be an add-on here that isn't addressed at all in this article. And because of that reason, and that important reason, I'd like to move to remove Dump Truck, Front End Loader, those four items totaling $616,000, to reduce the subtotal recommended bonded capital item to $2,363,410, and to reduce the total recommended capital item to $2,792,160. Thank you.
Mr. Collins, do you have that in writing?
No, I didn't. I just read it. I didn't think I... Excuse me. I apologize if I didn't put it in writing. I thought because it was a numbers item, we could adjust it on the floor rather than having to present to the town a written...
Okay. So I'd like to make sure I understood completely what your motion is. So the four items, the two items are the Water Enterprise Fund under the top section, subtotal recommended bonded capital items?
Yes.
Would you like to remove those two for 182 and 206?
Completely.
Okay. Any other?
Yes, and the sewer. Remove 210 and 18.
Okay. It has... Ms. Getman, can you represent that on your Word Doc so that folks can follow along? So if everyone understands, we're on the blue sheet. If you see in the top section, under the bonded capital items, the four rows that are the bottom of that section is being moved to strike. Would anyone like to then speak to the motion before the body to remove those four items? Yes, sorry, Mr. Hurley.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I guess first of all, these assets are replacing assets that are dedicated to water and sewer. They are vehicles that are 100% used by the Water and Sewer Enterprise Funds. To remove these doesn't remove the need for vehicles. The average age of the vehicles in the DPW was 17 years old. They're decrepit. We've been on a mission to try and get those vehicles up to some kind of a standard. To do what Mr. Collins would like to do right now, if vehicles go out of service, we're going to have to use town vehicles in place of that. We don't have enough. And this would be a disaster if this were to go forward.
Would anyone else like to speak to this motion to amend? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote on the motion to amend, which would be to remove the four items labeled, two on Water Enterprise Fund, Sewer Enterprise Fund, and their corresponding amounts. All in favor of approving the motion? Thank you. Pardon my mistake. Yes, we should hear from the warrant committee. Rookie mistake.
Could I speak one more time briefly, because I'm going to withdraw the article. Tom Hurley's talked me out of it.
With the motion withdrawn, would anyone like to then speak to the original article as presented up on the screen? And I'll look to Mr. Hurley this time.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'd just like to explain, I mean, the article before you was pretty much what it is. Your blue sheet makes two changes. In your original warrant, you had a $300,000 item that was called Roadways/Locker Room, or something to that effect. And the reason for that is, late in the process, when we were able to form the Water and Sewer Ent... I'm sorry, when we were able to, the Stormwater Enterprise Fund, there is capital committed to the Stormwater annually, and that's our aging stormwater system. You know, all those surface drains that we have out there. Milton's a very old town, and those things are very old and in need of repair, replacement, improvement. So it was $300,000 for FY '17 dedicated to that, which we had approved for funding, or recommended for funding. Once that moves into a separate utility, when that gets bonded, probably two years from now, that will move to, with that enterprise fund as well. So we were able to basically repurpose that $300,000 into the locker room for the DPW facility, which is really to solve a grievance by the DPW Union. If anybody's looked at their locker room, and I don't know if there's anybody here from the committee that's studying the new DPW facility, but that is a pretty decrepit... I've been in it. You wouldn't want to be in it. It's horrible. So it does need to be redone. We had previously committed about $400,000 to it. When the bids came in, the bids came in considerably higher than that. Right now, for whatever reason, prevailing wage and public construction projects are just through the roof. So we did have to commit more money to it. So we took an additional $230,000 and committed it to the locker room, and the rest of that $300,000, or $70,000, we committed to roadway improvements. So we now have 470-foot roadway improvements. And just very quickly, you know, the Capitol Committee is a moderator-appointed committee that it's by bylaw, basically, and it's been around for several years now. We're an advisory committee to basically the selectmen, and any capital item comes before us. We've tried to make some significant improvements on how we approach things over the years. We've come to a... One of our concerns was if we want to make sure that our bonding kind of stays, and our debt service stays at kind of an even keel level, that we don't drop our bonding, our debt service down, because what happens, that works its way into the operating budgets, and you can never get it back for capital. So we try and keep, and we spend a lot of time, we have developed spreadsheets that will kind of figure out where, what we think interest rates are going to be, the useful life of the assets, when they're going to be bonded. We plug them in, and we try and keep debt service at a constant 1.9% of the real estate tax levy. You know, it's an estimate, goes up and down, but we've been pretty successful at getting close to that number. So that's one thing that we do. We look at every single capital project. We interview every department head. We kind of prioritize where we think the needs are, and then we recommend them. This is, past couple of years, we've had some free cash. We realize free cash should have some dedication towards capital projects, and that's why you've seen over the past couple of years, more and more of that free cash actually being dedicated to those projects. So basically, that's what we do.
Anyone else wish to speak to this article?
John Hasar, Precinct 9. Mr. Collins, although he withdrew his motion, did raise an interesting point. Those four items, maybe except for the last one, are very expensive. Dump truck, $182,000; front end loader, $206,000; dump truck, 210. Those things will depreciate 20% to 25% on day one. We're much better off buying good, used equipment. We can save six figures, several times six figures, if we buy good, used equipment. We have consolidated facilities. I don't know who's buying this equipment, but we can save a lot of money by buying good, used equipment. Lot of money we're leaving on the table.
Anyone else wish to speak to this motion? This motion require... Do we have a comment from... No, okay. This article requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor of the recommendation of the warrant committee, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
The motion passes. I declare a two-thirds vote. There's voice from above. Recommended that, Article 7, recommended that the town authorize the town audit committee to make recommendations of the Board of Selectmen relative to the appointment of a certified public accountant for the purposes of this article, and that the town appropriate the amount shown in the following tabulations under the heading "Recommended," and that to meet said appropriation, the sum of $63,200 be raised from the tax levy. Does anyone wish to speak to this article? We do have a requirement by a recent bylaw passed within the last couple of years by Town Meeting that the Chair of the Audit Committee needs to report out once a year to you in Town Meeting their findings. So if I'll recognize Kathleen White, if she is in the audience.
There we go. Good evening, neighbors. My name is Kathy White. I'm the Chair of the Audit Committee, the newly reinvigorated Audit Committee. The other current members are Chris Heavy and Jay Funling. As the moderator, Mr. Moderator said, one of our responsibilities is to report out to annual town meeting on the management letter and internal control recommendations that came from our audit firm. As you know, or may know, the audit firm of Powers &amp; Sullivan reports, gives an opinion on our, on the audit of financial statements. The other thing that they do, in addition to issuing an opinion, is they issue a management letter, which gives various recommendations on better efficiencies or better controls for the town. So our fairly new committee has met once, and so we have not yet met with the audit firm, but we did speak with Amy Dexter, our Town Accountant, Mr. McAuliffe, Jim McAuliffe, the Treasurer, and so where we stand right now is, as of the, excuse me, 6:30, 15-year end, there were 13 management letter comments that the audit firm recommended. And so what we've done is really just, in our brief report to Town Meeting, we'll put those in three buckets based on the discussions with Amy and Jim, and I'll just run through those three buckets. The first bucket being the items that were recommended and anticipated to be completed by the end of the current fiscal year. Where am I directing this? Okay. You can go to the next slide. Yeah, there we go. So there are six items that they're expecting to be completed by this year end that are, you know, totally expected to be complete, and we'll, you know, affirm this and get this validated by the audit firm when they are back in town in August and be doing their year-end work for the 6:30, 16-year end. The six items, just to run through them very quickly, there was an extraneous treasurer's bank account, really an unnecessary holding account, set up a long time ago for logistical ease, and that has since been closed. There's been reconciliations that need to be done, and certain payroll withholding, just to make sure that those are accounted for. Unclaimed checks, which had been lingering for a long period of time, have since been returned to town funds. Student activity savings account, that is now tracked and recorded in the cashbook as it should have been. The police detail process is now no longer a very manual system, and that's sort of a theme in some of these recommendations, that we move away from very manual processes to more automated and better record-keeping. So that has since been adopted in the past year. And then monthly payroll and vendor account reconciliations. These should clear, but people don't cash their checks in a very timely fashion. So those are expected to be done by year end. The next bucket, if you can, is just two items that are in process and have, you know, fairly, you know, and well-anticipated game plan for getting them to resolution. One is the purchase order system. The school department is using it, and it's expected that all the other town departments will be up to speed at the end of the next fiscal year. And I think that's in conjunction with adopting a new financial accounting system. So there's a lot of, you know, good things going on there. And then also anticipated is, because of the timing of requirements, the audit of student activity funds. So those are expected to, you know, come to resolution. They have a good game plan and timing on them. And then, thank you. The last bucket, we'll call open items, really, because, you know, there's not a very specific game plan, or they're in some ways a little more aspirational items, I would say. And they have received attention and have done, had some thinking about them, and, but we'll certainly have discussions with the audit firm when they're back in August, back in town, doing their year-end work for the current year. The first is just reconciliation between the treasurer's tax title balance and the general ledger. These are off by, you know, not a huge amount, but the fact that, you know, our tax revenue, you'd like them to be spot-on. So that's one item there. And we believe, you know, it's probably some vendor assistance is needed on the software. The second is, which, second open item is monitoring compensated absences in a centralized system. Currently, this is, you know, widely dispersed, different departments, either tracked in Excel, or you hear discussions of colored, you know, color-coded cards and all. So certainly a more automated system and better tracking around that would be, you know, a better process and more up-to-date. I think one of the challenges, as we understand it, is that, you know, there's lots of arrangements, collective bargaining arrangements, and different policies, and so, and it may need to sort dovetail with a payroll system, too. So this may be a more complex fix. The third open item is just documenting operational accounting processes. That has happened to some extent in the accounting department and the treasurer's office, and is, you know, an ongoing, ongoing item. So certainly has received attention. The fourth item, which has been recommended, and I should say, some of these have lingered for quite a few years, so it's good that resolution is happening. Some are brand-new. But the auditors have recommended a centralization of the procurement process. That certainly is, you know, something that we hear a lot about, and the Town Government Study Committee has, you know, taken up that point. So I think that is, you know, getting looked at by lots of knowledgeable folks and being addressed. And the final is more of an informational, that there are new accounting standards that are coming down the road, and that will require some new reporting of other post-employment benefits, so that there'll be a significant change required to the financial statements. And I think that's it. As I said, our intention is to meet with the auditors when they return to town in August, and we'll go from there. I think we're, you know, we also have other responsibilities, recommending the audit firm, discussing the scope of their work, and so certainly the firm has been engaged for the 6:30, 16-year end, and for the following year will, you know, probably investigate, you know, whether it's appropriate to, you know, to do a request for a proposal, and it's been a long, long time that, you know, one particular firm has done the work, which may be the right firm, but that is another responsibility of the committee. Okay, thank you.
Anyone wish to speak to this article? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye. Seeing none, all those in favor of the recommendation of the warrant committee say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. It's unanimous. Article eight. To see what sum of money the town will vote to appropriate for the purpose of funding cost items not in departmental budgets for the twelve months beginning July 1, 2016, for collective bargaining agreements reached before or after this town meeting between the town and bargaining units representing town employees. Such sums to be allocated to departments and to act on anything related thereto. It's recommended that the town appropriate the sum of two-hundred-and-seventy thousand, one-hundred-and-eighty-eight, and that to meet said appropriation, the same sum be raised from the tax levy. Anyone wish to speak to this article? Seeing none, all those in favor of the recommendation of the warrant committee say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no.
No.
The article passes. Article nine. To see what sum of money the town will vote to appropriate for the twelve months beginning July 1, 2016, for the categories classified as employee benefits and to act on anything relating thereto. It's recommended that the town appropriate the amounts shown in the following tabulation under the heading "Recommended". I'll just go to the total. Total employee benefits, sixteen million, one-hundred-and-nine-thousand, six-hundred-and-twenty-six, and that to meet said appropriation, the sum of sixteen million, one-hundred-and-nine-thousand, six-twenty-six be raised from the tax levy. Does anyone wish to speak to this article? Seeing none, all those in favor of the recommendation of the warrant committee say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. It's unanimous. Article ten. I will entertain a motion to waive the reading of this lengthy article. Anyone wish to speak to the motion to? I heard a second. Yep. Second. Anyone wish to speak to the waiving of the reading? All in favor of waiving the reading, which is hard to say? Please say aye. Opposed? Does anyone wish to speak to this article? All those in favor of the recommendation of the warrant committee say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. It's unanimous. Article twelve. Eleven, pardon me, jumped ahead. Article eleven. Yes, Article ten, pardon me. So, Article eleven. To see if the town will vote to amend Chapter thirteen of the general bylaws. Let me just find my page. Pardon me? Did I skip ten? We waive the reading of ten. Yes, please. Thank you very much. Any discussion on the waiving of the, reading of the Article eleven? All in favor of waiving the reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion passes, so we will now move to, see if anyone wishes to speak to Article eleven. Seeing none, all those in favor of the recommendation of the warrant committee say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The article passes unanimously. Article twelve. Recommended that the town appropriate the amount shown in the following tabulations under the heading "Recommendations", and I'll just read some of the subtotals since it's all, should be displayed on the screen, so. Total inspectional services, four-hundred-and-twenty-eight-thousand, two-twenty-nine. Total fire, five-point-three-million, twenty-four, six-hundred-and-eighty-six. Total emergency management, ten-thousand, six-hundred-and-fifteen. Total police and youth, six-million, eight-hundred-and-seventy-six-thousand, six-thirty-two. Total public safety, twelve-million, six-hundred-and-forty-thousand, one-sixty-two. And that to meet said appropriations for lease law enforcement, the sum of fourteen-hundred be transferred from the dog licenses surcharge account received pursuant to Chapter one-eighty-seven of the Acts of nineteen-eighty-one, and that the balance of twelve-million, six-hundred-and-thirty-eight-thousand, seven-sixty-two be raised in the tax levy in the fiscal year. Does anyone wish to speak to this article? Seeing none, all those in favor of the recommendation of the warrant committee say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The vote's unanimous. Article thirteen. Another long article. The chair would entertain waiving, reading of that long article. Is there a second? Second. Any discussion on waiving the reading? All those in favor of the reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Very good. We will go to, anyone like to speak to the main article? All those in favor of the recommendation of the warrant committee say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. It's unanimous. Keep Me Honest, Article fourteen. To see what sum of money the town will vote to appropriate for the twelve-month period, July 1, 2016, for the operation of the several boards and committees. Recommended that the town appropriate, again, I'll just read the items under the recommended column. So, Conservation Commission, twenty-five-hundred. We have a motion to waive the reading of the article. Is there a second? Any discussion on the waive? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion passes. Would anyone like to speak to the main article? All in favor of the recommendation of the warrant committee, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion passes. Article fifteen. Recommended that the town appropriate the amount shown in the following tabulation under the heading "Recommended". I'll go to the subtotal. Subtotal public works, two-million, three-hundred-and-thirty-four-thousand, thirty-nine. Solid waste management, one-million, four-hundred-and-sixty-one-thousand, three-hundred-and-five. Total public works, three-million, seven-hundred-and-ninety-five-thousand, three-hundred-and-forty-four. And that to meet said appropriation, the sum of three-million, seven-hundred-and-ninety-five-thousand, three-forty-four be raised from the tax levy. Of the total amount appropriated, the maximum sum authorized for salaries and wages is nine-hundred-and-fifty-one-thousand, four-zero-nine-four. The public works department is hereby authorized to sell at a private or public sale with the approval of the board of selectmen, equipment that is no longer needed by the department. It is further authorized to exchange or trade in old equipment for similar materials in the usual course of its operations to provide for replacement items. Does anyone wish to speak to this article? Seeing none, all those in favor of the recommendation of the warrant committee say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Did I hear a no? Nope. Yeah, it's unanimous, then. Article sixteen. Recommended that the town appropriate five-million, five-hundred-and-twenty-thousand, one-hundred-and-fifty-two for the Water Enterprise Fund, and that four-hundred-and-eighty-five-thousand be included in appropriations from the general fund for indirect costs and be allocated to the Water Enterprise Fund for funding, and that six-million, five-thousand, one-hundred-and-fifty-two dollars be raised and appropriated as follows. Again, I'll hit the summary lines. Total revenue of the Water Enterprise Fund, six-million, five-thousand, one-hundred-and-fifty-two dollars. Subtotal indirect costs of Water Enterprise, five-million, five-hundred-and-twenty-five, excuse me, five-hundred-and-twenty-five, five-hundred-and-twenty-thousand, one-hundred-and-fifty-two. Indirect costs, four-hundred-and-eighty-five-thousand, for a total of six-million, five-thousand, one-hundred-and-fifty-two. Does anyone wish to speak to this article? Seeing none, all those in favor of the recommendation of the warrant committee say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The article passes unanimously. Article seventeen. Recommended that the town appropriate seven-million, one-hundred-and-seventy-two-thousand, seven-hundred-and-forty dollars for the Sewer Enterprise Fund. That five-hundred-and-thirty-four-thousand be included in the appropriations from the general fund for indirect costs and be allocated to the Sewer Enterprise Fund for funding, and that seven-million, seven-hundred-and-six-thousand, seven-hundred-and-forty be raised and appropriated as follows. I'll just read the headings under revenue. Total revenue, seven-million, seven-hundred-and-six-thousand, seven-hundred-and-forty. Subtotal direct costs, seven-million, one-hundred-and-seventy-two-thousand, seven-forty. Indirect costs, five-hundred-and-thirty-four-thousand, for a total cost of seven-million, seven-hundred-and-six-thousand, seven-forty. Does anyone wish to speak to this article? Seeing none, all those in favor of the recommendation of the warrant committee, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The article carries. Article eighteen. Recommended that the town appropriate six-hundred-and-thirty-eight-thousand, two-hundred-and-nineteen for the Stormwater Enterprise Fund. That seventy-five-thousand be included in appropriations from the general fund for indirect costs and be allocated to the Stormwater Enterprise Fund for funding, and that seven-hundred-and-thirteen-thousand, two-nineteen be raised and appropriated as follows. Again, I'll just hit the headings. Total revenue, seven-hundred-and-thirteen-thousand, two-hundred-and-nineteen. Subtotal direct costs, six-hundred-and-thirty-eight-thousand, two-hundred-and-nineteen. Indirect, seventy-five-thousand, for a total cost of seven-hundred-and-thirteen-thousand, two-hundred-and-nineteen. The chair would like to recognize, Chairman Hurley, would you like to speak first?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. As this is a new, a new enterprise fund formed by the February special town meeting, I'd like to, with your indulgence, ask Joe Lynch, to, our DPW director, to just give a short presentation, not so much on the budget, but, you can certainly answer questions on the budget, but mostly on, we've had two public hearings so far on the rate-setting process and methodology, so he'd like to kind of go over that methodology and, you know, just kind of explain, you know, some of the residents' concerns and comments and where we stand right now on that methodology, and to give town meeting kind of an idea of where we think the rates are going to come in at.
Mr. Lynch is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Again, my name is Joseph Lynch. I'm the Director of Public Works here in town and happy to serve you folks. We were here in February for a special town meeting where we adopted a stormwater utility for the first time, and, just waiting for the... Okay, so in February, the very comprehensive presentation was made at this town meeting. Some of these slides, very few of these slides are redundant. That entire presentation is still on the town's website. For those folks who are new town meeting members who haven't seen that, I encourage you to look at the town website and maybe come up to speed on it. So, what this looks to do is really discover ever so briefly what the MS4 permit is, and that is a federal EPA permit that obligates cities and towns across the entire nation, but more in particular to Milton, an obligation to do certain things through a mandatory process to provide water quality enhancements and improvements. We've operated under a prior permit since 2003. The new EPA permit, which we had spoken to back in February, which was on the cusp of being released, was in fact released on April 4th and is now in place. The new permit didn't have any surprises to speak of. It's built upon the 2003 permit. It does require more detailed and more rigorous activities with regards to what we were required to do under the old permit. One of the biggest issues is that we have to issue a stormwater management plan. It's the SWMP. This is laced with acronyms, I apologize. That in itself is a written document, more than a guideline, that is mandatory through the EPA, that requires us to do very specific activities with regards to our own housekeeping, our own regulatory process, and our own oversight of construction activities by others in town. It also puts in place a very extensive analysis, sampling and analysis program, and then reporting in great detail the findings of those, all in the efforts of being able to demonstrate that we're trying to meet the TMDLs, which are total maximum daily loads for bacteria, which is the resource in our watershed that's the most vulnerable. It also requires us to look for other things as well, but we cannot exceed the TMDLs for bacteria. We had mentioned this last, last meeting, is that it requires just basically six minimum control measures. They're very simple bullets, as you can see on the screen here. They don't differ much from the last permit. However, they greatly expanded when you look at the detail of what's required in the new permit. What it does, though, is it puts a great emphasis on costs in order for us to simply comply with the permit. It does have a ramping-up effect, meaning that the first-year permit, which is what we budgeted for, will likely increase with more rigorous activities in the next coming year, and then probably taper off to the maximum requirement in about year, year three of the permit. The entire budget process that we had done in fiscal '17 in looking at stormwater was in light of what this permit might look like, and as I alluded to earlier, it hasn't surprised us now that it's brought out. What it really boils down to is that we have about six-hundred-and-thirty-thousand dollars in direct costs, and there are other indirect costs, which is simply pass-throughs from other departments such as accounting and auditing and personnel board and whatnot, and in other parts of government that get assigned to the utility, much like they do for water, and so making the total utility cost for FY '17 to be estimated at seven-hundred-and-five-thousand dollars. That being said, is, that is the amount of money that has to be raised in order to carry out the program in, in essence of the enterprise, is the starting point from which any fee would be calculated. As we said earlier, the stormwater utility was created at town meeting on February 2nd, special town meeting. What it did is it allows us to create this utility in an enterprise model, which allows us to track costs strictly to that, to that entity, and to track revenues and assign them directly to the, offsetting those costs of that entity. What we had done coming into that meeting in February was to look at a fee-based revenue alternative. It allowed us to allocate costs based on some sort of usage, and mostly for stormwater usages based on some sort of allocation of impervious surface on properties across town. We haven't strayed off of that model through the eighteen months that we've worked up to February, but what we have done is understand that within that model, we can get something that would be a predictable revenue source for years to come to carry out the permit. It would be transparent, as it's being an enterprise. As I said, those costs are directly tracked, and the revenues are directly tracked, and it gives us some flexibility in order for us to be able to meet those goals in future years as well. More advantages is, it also gives us some capability of giving it some equity of allocating these costs in a proportional fashion across town. It may not include all taxable properties, much like the tax-exempt right now. We're not getting any revenue from, some tax-exempt properties have a great amount of impervious area, and by this model, we would be recovering some of those funds. We also don't want to de-incentivize any impervious surface enhancements, rain gardens or infiltrators or other things that may be environmentally sound, but in the first year, we haven't included any of these in the model. We are looking to what other communities are doing to maybe better understand what it is we could offer for incentives in the future for people doing beneficial things for stormwater enhancement. So, what we've done so far, leading into the special town meetings, we completed the aerial photography. We've been able, based on that, to understand the impervious surface impact of all of the structures. We're able to segregate these costs across that first year of the permit, and we drafted a feasibility study report with MAPC and NEPA, and we've brought that to the selectmen at the town meeting in February. But since, since February, what we've been able to do is go back and revisit all of our parcel data and to confirm that all the properties were properly categorized. Again, for the first study, we were very high-altitude stuff. Now, we're starting to hone down a little bit closer, hone down a little bit closer, and particularly in support of the public hearings that we were carrying out. We were able to determine, though, that the revenue requirement was generated versus a fee, meaning that we knew that we could generate the total operating costs through a fee structure. We also determined what types of properties would be subject to the fee, and what it really boiled down to was all properties across the entire town, would all be subject to it, with no exemptions. We've held discussions with the local officials, and we've also conducted four public informational meetings, two leading to special town meeting and two subsequent to town meeting, which allowed for public input in exchange of ideas. We also verified, also we were able to go back and verify that all impervious surfaces, considerations were consistently handled across town. We wanted to make certain that the way they were modeled at that high altitude, that we didn't miss something, and then what we did in fact find was that there were, in fact, some inequities with private ways and condominiums, and maybe larger developments, roadway networks and parking lots might have been handled. That was particularly true with the DCR, when you looked at their large impervious area with their roadway networks, but nonetheless had large, large open spaces. So we went back and we looked on a more consistent basis to make certain that we handled all of those types of properties in a very similar and consistent manner. Based on that, we were able to go back and modify our analyses, and we were able to remove those DCR roadways, and then assign all of the impervious areas, surface areas on private roadways and condominiums and larger tracks of lands in a very similar and consistent manner. We found that some areas, the parking lots and roofs were only counted, but not the driveways, and we found in other properties that the larger driveways, parking lots, and roofs were all counted. So at this point, we've been able to go back on a parcel-by-parcel basis and make certain that they're all handled exactly the same way. We were also able to consider other alternative methods for the fee allocation, and these were raised by folks during the two public hearings that we had. There were some things that we didn't necessarily consider, such as just simply a per-parcel basis, per-square-foot basis, per-linear-foot-of-frontage basis, and all of those, you know, gave it some thought and ruled them out. One thing in particular that did come up was looking at what was previously a two-tier of housing, single-family housing, large or small, one or the other. Question was asked, you know, would you consider looking at breaking that into four tiers? And we were able to go back and do that. And with those considerations, we were able to go back and calculate. Now, leading into town meeting in February, what it really boiled down to in this whole discussion was, it was going to be about .46 per hundred square feet of impervious area would cover that $750,000 operation cost. What that, and I'm going to blast through these slides, because at the very end, we can switch between them. What that resulted in is an estimate of about $9 per quarter for a smaller single-family home, $23 per quarter for a larger single-family home, and then they were a little more inconsistent for the larger residential, meaning multifamilies, and the commercials and the tax exempts. By going back and do the analyses, redoing the analyses based on the public hearing input, we were able to take that operating cost, that same $705,000 revenue needed to generate, with all that verified and recalculated area, we were able to reduce that unit down to .38 per hundred cubic feet, as opposed to .46 per hundred cubic feet, hundred square feet, excuse me. And I think you'll see the dramatic change, not dramatic dollar-wise, but you can see it's a significant change on the rate, if you will. We considered going to a four-tier, which allowed, if you remember, that number was nine and 24 for the two types of residential classes of property. By breaking it to four tiers, we were able to keep the first three tiers, presumably the smaller properties, working up to those medium and a little larger than medium properties, were able to keep those all below the 24, and in most instances, below the original $9 that we had in February. What it did do, though, is increase the larger tract, single-family homes, large roof areas, long driveways, it did increase it from $23 up to $39. And it held consistently most of the residential other and the commercial rates, if you will, fees, these are fees, and then the tax-exempt ones, mostly being driven by DCR being extremely large to maybe some of the smaller churches, has a huge, huge range. The big number is, in fact, DCR's impact on this calculation. So what we've been able to accomplish since February was to come back, look and verify our square footage, basically lower the rate that we would charge per impervious area, and then spread that out more equitably across the residential classes of properties. Action tonight is looking to deal with the budget. This update is simply an update. We will be conducting at least one more public hearing with the Board of Selectmen, at which point in time, the Selectmen will then be deliberating what this fee structure will look like, and then put it in place in order for us to put bills up in the first quarter of 2017, sometime in the summer. Thank you.
Does any member wish to speak to Article 18? Chair recognizes you.
Jay Funling, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 3. I would just like to make sure I understand how the money is flowing. When I look at the numbers, I see 713, 219 coming in, 713, 219 going out, so that's good. When I read the words, it says, "$75,000 will be included in appropriation from the general fund for indirect cost." And I'm very hung up on that. Is money going from the general fund to the enterprise fund? Should the word "from" be "to"? I'm not suggesting amendment, because I'm actually confused, but hopefully something can be clarified. Thank you.
Chair recognizes Mr. Hurley.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The $75,000, like the Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund, is an indirect cost allocation. So these are costs that are incurred by other town departments that support other departments, such as the accounting department, you know, the audit, some of the employee benefits, those kinds of things, which are now being allocated to the enterprise fund. The revenue to pay for those has to come in from the enterprise fund charge, you know, charges to ratepayers. So the revenue is being raised by the rate, some of it is going to pay direct costs, and in essence, some of it is going to reimburse the general fund for indirect costs.
Any follow-up? That answer your question?
As long as Town Council is okay with this wording, I'm okay with it.
That's a nod in the affirmative. Anyone else wish to speak to Article 18? Mr. Hajar?
John Hajar, Precinct 9. My question is directed at the head of DPW. Are there any offsets considered? Is there any method of abating the cost of the ratepayer? For instance, if you have maybe a large amount of impervious surface, but you also have a wetland, and the impervious surface is fed directly into the wetland, for example?
Mr. Lynch?
Is this microphone live?
It is.
Okay, thank you. The answer is, all of the impervious surface on a parcel-by-parcel basis is included in the baseline cost, certainly for the first year. Part of the logic is that the largest part of impervious surface not attributed to parcels are the roadway network itself, of which everybody enjoys the benefits of using that roadway network in the stormwater system that's within that roadway network. So we're simply, I don't want to say simply, but we're very carefully and cautiously looking at the impervious surfaces of properties on a private ownership basis, and considering them to have to take on some portion of the total in impervious surfaces, what's typically done. What I was alluding to earlier was an incentive program in the future where, you know, private property owners and developers perhaps could propose certain types of systems that would be directly beneficial. And, you know, as this thing evolves and we find out what other towns have done historically or might be contemplating moving forward, we will roll those out in future years, but they have not been included in FY '17.
That doesn't answer the question. Question is, are there considerations for offsets? If you have impervious surface, but that impervious surface is being fed directly into a wetland where it's being recharged, there should be some consideration made as a matter of fairness. And from your lack of response, I take it that there's no consideration taken?
No, if it was a lack of response, I apologize. The answer is, all impervious areas on every property is counted, regardless of where it goes. Some of it doesn't flow to the roadway at all, some of it flows off property, some of it flows to wetlands. But all of it has cumulative effect when it finally finds its way to the outfalls in various parts of the watershed. So it isn't...
Mr. Hajar, we shouldn't be getting into it, debate.
But that's inherently inequitable. If it's staying on your property and being recharged into the groundwater, you shouldn't be charged. It should be based on a net, not on the gross amount. It should be based on the net amount. That's the fair way to do it. Otherwise, you're socializing the costs for people, you're not incentivizing the people who are doing it right, who are retaining the water and their own property.
I don't think that was a question, no response required. That was a statement, yes. Anyone else wish to speak to this motion? Yes?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Sean Fahey, Precinct 9. Just a question, Mr. Lynch. We list salary and wages as $188,719 and expenses $439,500. Would salary and wages mean that we are hiring staff for the purpose of this task or tasks that are involved in this? And also, could you provide a little bit of detail what the $439,000 worth of expenses might be?
Mr. Lynch?
Certainly. There is one staff person being added. It's a labor staff position for the purpose of carrying out actual activities on the ground. The expense line is pretty much driven mostly by our yard waste collection, our organic yard waste, even though that used to be in the solid waste budget, but having an organic yard waste program and having a household hazardous waste program are both requirements under the EPA permit. So those costs are driven into the expenses. The other expenses are street sweeping, catch basin cleaning, and disposal of materials for that, and it's the collection of samples, analysis of samples, and issuing of reports, and some consulting work with regards to putting the new notice of intent together for EPA, for us to actually do this work under the new permit. And that's, in a nutshell, the items in the first year. In year two, you're going to see ramping up of additional requirements with regards to system upgrades, and once you find problems, going in and solving those problems once they've been identified.
Okay. I guess I need a little bit more detail to understand this. We're hiring one person for the purpose of this, and that $188,000 is... Can you explain a little bit more detail there, please? And if I could, I may have overlooked yard waste in the February town meeting. I don't recall anything written about yard waste. I guess I just want to understand this. I'm of the opinion this is stormwater EPA standards we're trying to meet, and I'm confused now, we're talking about yard waste costs being somehow included in that $439,000.
So let's, on the first point on salary and wages, it is not one new person. This number includes the hiring of one person. It also is the allocation of the folks who are already cleaning catch basins, are already sweeping streets, who are already on the town payroll, and just simply pushing them into the stormwater operation. Yard waste has always been a requirement of the, yard waste collection and disposal and having a program, has always been a requirement of the federal EPA stormwater program. Their composting and the nutrients and the bacteria resulting from that of being done improperly have been a concern of the EPA for years. So that's always been part of this program. It was pulled out of the DPW budget last year, and then included in a consistent way this year.
Anyone else wish to speak to, I'll see if anyone else wishes to speak before recognizing you a second time. Anyone else wish to speak to Article 18? Please come down and be recognized.
Jim Coyle from Precinct 7...
Just step a little closer to the mic, please, Mr. Coyle.
Okay, Jim Coyle from Precinct 7. I just have a point of clarification. I'm not sure who to direct this to. I'll direct it to the moderator. Why, from what I understand, is there any money in this budget to inspect the stormwater system as it currently exists, and so that the future budgets can be better identified at all? I mean, from what I'm hearing, assuming the expenses, there's no inspections in there for the existing stormwater system and its current condition and performance.
Mr. Lynch, can you answer that question?
Yes, I hope to. If you look at the table contents in the warrant, you're going to see that in Article 18 on page 42, there's going to be a stormwater enterprise, excuse me, that's the appropriation. It's Article 21 on page 45, is appropriation of rehabilitation of the town stormwater system. That's a capital outlay for exactly that purpose. So it comes in as a separate capital item.
Right. So there are no capital outlays at all in this?
Within the budget itself.
Within this budget.
That is correct. There was in prior years, but all of the prior capital years, monies were appropriate under separate town meetings, and those debt services were not included within this budget because they were voted before the enterprise was created.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak to this article? Yes, sir, please be recognized.
Keith Schleicher, Precinct 4, and I have two questions. It says "fee," so I'm wondering how that's going to be collected? And the second thing is, as another gentleman brought up, I live on the parkway, my driveway goes like that into my backyard, my basement floods, so it looks like I'll be paying for something that I'm not going to be getting any advantage of, so comment on that.
So there's a question on the fee?
Question on the fee?
Right.
Question on why people are paying for something that they might not be getting advantage of.
Mr. Lynch?
I think the question was, how would the fee be collected?
Yes.
So we envision this to be a fee that would be assigned on a quarterly basis, much like your water and sewer bill. We look to probably keep the expenses down by simply having as a separate line on that same piece of paper, that same invoice that comes out, that will simply have a new line that says "stormwater." It will be payable through that single payment back to the town. There are, we have to work through some of the details, because not all properties receive water or sewer bills. There are some properties who receive none. And we also have to understand, you know, how it is that we have an accounting system with regards to the payment of partial payments, paying water, paying sewer, but perhaps not paying stormwater, and understand how that works with the ability to lean or collect.
Mr. Hurley, for the second part of the question?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Yeah, in terms of the second part of the question, yeah, unfortunately, we don't have a meter that measures stormwater discharge, we just don't have one. This is the best method we have available for us to try and figure out whose driveway is pitch which way. You know, it would be an absolute nightmare. You know, we'd spend more money trying to do that. You can see that it's not a huge, huge budget. It will ramp up, like Mr. Lynch says, as the requirements of the permit go up, but not to a significant degree. There will be some capital and debt service outlay in the future that is not currently in here. You'll see, as we go forward into the articles, there's a $300,000 capital article for, you know, stormwater drain improvement. The debt service on that won't start for another two years. So there will be some debt service costs going into it. But keep in mind that these costs are going to be incurred either way. If it's not in your storm, in a stormwater utility, it's going to be in your real estate tax bill, and you're going to be assessed based upon the value of your house, regardless of which way your driveway goes. So, you know, this way, at least, we've got some correlation between stormwater discharge and the cost, even though it's not perfect. There just is no perfect system, unfortunately. And, you know, we don't want to put hundreds of thousands of dollars of administration into trying to figure out whose driveway pitches which way and which discharge is where, you know, to really actually be charging the ratepayers more for that administrative charge. It just didn't make any sense, especially at this point when we're talking about, on the residential properties, not charging each person for their own impervious surface, but kind of doing an average impervious surface and breaking all the residentials into four quadrants, small, the next, you know, I shouldn't say small, medium, and large, but the first 25%, the second 25%, the third 25%, and the fourth 25%, based upon the average size of impervious surface. So the smaller, which, you know, a good chunk of people are going to fall into is $6 per quarter right now. You know, that'll ramp up a little bit, but it's still not a huge number. You know, I wish there was a better way, but we certainly don't want to spend extra mon... money trying to figure out, you know, like I said, whose driveway pitches which way.
You have a follow-up, sir?
Well, I guess it might be fair to offer an abatement if someone feels that, that at a 94% taxing, I mean, residential money coming in and then another fee on top of that for something that may or may not affect you, I think an abatement might be something that you want to consider.
Do you have a reply, Mr. McLean? Do you have an answer for that? Okay, thank you. Mr. Frizzetti, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Steve Frizzetti, town meeting member, Precinct 7. I would urge everyone in this room to Google degrowth movement. PBS did a documentary where they interviewed a proponent of the degrowth movement. By using the impervious surface, it implies that it's part of the degrowth movement. And you said there wasn't a better way. Well, there is a really easy way. You could just basically go off the square footage of everyone's lot. That would... It'd be less arbitrary. And you have to remember, the rain falls everywhere. And please, I urge everyone to Google the documentary. Thank you.
Before we go to the people wishing to speak a second time, would anyone else like to speak first or speak to this article? Mr. Fahey, I think you were first. Do you still want to speak? Yes, please.
Thanks, Mr. Moderator. I'm still a little... I'm struggling with this. I think, Mr. Lynch, you said earlier that the latest update that was issued by the EPA, and I'm going to paraphrase, didn't have any showstoppers from the initial guidelines issued in 2003. It seems that, and for me, there's some transparency that's lacking. I'm getting the feeling that, from the exchange that we've had, some of these costs were currently paid for elsewhere within the budgets and are being moved into this category. And I'm inclined to... This feels like a funding source that's being created without necessarily good definition of what we're actually doing to meet this new EPA update. So I... I'm certainly... I'll be seated, but I am... I'm not clear at all on the 188 and the 439 and what we're really paying for and what we're asking the taxpayers to support.
Mr. Lynch?
There was a paraphrase that was made, and I'd like to just provide clarification on that. The 2003 permit was a five-year permit. That permit expired in 2008. All of the communities in Region 1 EPA, which is all of New England and parts of New York, were covered on an extension since 2008. So we've been operating under that extended permit, which was the same as the 2003. However, in all of those years that have gone by, they have EPA and the DEP have been working hand in hand, trying to establish what this new permit would look like. So when there weren't surprises, it was from all of those draft permits that came out and most particularly that final draft permit that came out that was open for public comment for about an eight-month period. So there were no surprises on that final draft of the new permit. There are greatly ramped up requirements, simply stated, one so dramatic as you shall sweep all streets once per year. The new permit says you shall sweep all streets twice per year, doubling effect. So those are... It's dramatic as it is, it's not a surprise we knew it was coming.
And Mr. Hager?
Precinct 9. I urge a no vote on this article. Again, I think from all the comments, we understand that it's very vague. It's another charge that will be unfairly assessed and there's no method to abate the charge. So for those reasons, I urge a no vote on this matter. It's just another power grab by the EPA, another tax, more bureaucracy, more making Milton more... Less and less affordable by charging our poor residents more and more money, making it more and more difficult to live in this town. Thank you.
Mr. Hurley, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I just want town meeting to remember what we're voting on. We're not voting tonight on establishing an enterprise fund. We've already done that. We're voting on a budget tonight. So keep that in mind. If you want to cut this budget, what you do is you cut our ability to manage stormwater. There is a... And correct me if I'm wrong, $50,000 per day? $25,000 per day penalty for not complying with the permit. Now, you know, they're pretty lenient in terms of communities that are making an effort, but they have levied those penalties, Framingham being one in the past. And there have been other communities that have had those penalties. So we're voting on a budget. If you cut the budget, you cut the ability to manage stormwater.
Mr. Hager, please. I think you've spoken twice already. I think that's sufficient to speak. Mr. Irwin, you're recognized.
Hi, Gene Irwin, town meeting member, Precinct 9. I get, you know, that we passed the stormwater bill and we have to pay for it somehow. But my concern is, and no one's brought it up, is how are we ever going to get rid of this utility? I think we should... That should be our focus. We're all, I think, familiar with roads like Brook Road in Milton. I live on Highland Street. And if, for instance, we said, okay, we have a $713,000 budget, but let's say we're depositing 10 million gallons of stormwater into our rivers. I think we can very easily set up dry wells instead of piping the water into our rivers, just set up dry wells. That's a stone, giant hole with stones and the water drains straight into the ground. And I think we should have a goal every year to reduce our stormwater runoff by, say, 10%. And in 10 years, we could do away with this entire utility. Thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak to this motion? Since all those... Oh, Mr. McLean. Yes, thank you.
Just a quick point about abatements. You can see on the screen that the total cost excluding capital items to the town of Milton for stormwater is $713,219. If we abate any specific parcel of land in the town, the cost is still $713,219, which means the cost on other parcels would have to go up. The fee is not being allocated to cover the size of your roof and the size of your driveway. The fee covers all of the property in town, including the roadways that we all drive on every day. So the actual size of your roof and your driveway is probably dwarfed by your proportional size of the town of Milton that you're being assessed for. The size of your property was simply a proxy for dividing up the fee among our residents. So please keep that in mind and the warrant committee urges a yes vote.
You have, yes, another chance to speak or second comment?
Keith Schleicher, Precinct 4. We're paying $270,000 for our town workers to shower at the DPW and we're going to pay $713,000 around all this. I just... It doesn't seem like this is well... It doesn't tell us everything that's going in here and that's... It just doesn't seem right. Thank you.
Do you have a... No. I sense that everyone's had a chance... I'm sorry, Mr. Hager. Everyone's had a chance to speak twice. I don't see any new voices coming forward, so I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor of the recommendation of the warrant committee, say aye?
Aye!
Oppose, no?
No!
The motion carries. Article 19. Recommended that the sum of $622,978 be appropriated for the purposes set forth in this article that to meet said appropriation. The treasurer be authorized to issue with the approval of the Board of Selectmen bonds or secured notes in the amount of $622,978. That the town vote to accept grants under the provisions of MGL Chapter 90 in the amount of $622,978. The said reimbursements from the state 100% to be restored upon their receipt to the town treasurer. This requires a two-thirds vote. Does anyone wish to speak to the motion? All in favor of the recommendation of the warrant committee, say aye?
Aye!
Oppose, no? It's unanimous. Article 20. Recommended that the sum of $500,000 be appropriated for the purpose of financing the rehabilitation, replacement or enhancement of the town's water system, including costs incidental and related thereto. That to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the Board of Selectmen is authorized to borrow $500,000 under and pursuant to Chapter 44, Section 8 of the General Laws as amended or any other enabling authority and to issue bonds or notes of the town therefore and that the Board of Selectmen may and hereby is authorized to accept and expend in addition to the foregoing appropriation, one or more grants or gifts from the Massachusetts Water Resources Authority or any other public or private funding source. This article requires a two-thirds vote. Would anyone like to speak to it? All those in favor of the recommendation of the warrant committee, say aye?
Aye!
Oppose, no? The vote's unanimous. Article 21. Recommended that the sum of $300,000 be appropriated for the purpose of financing the rehabilitation, replacement or enhancement of the town's stormwater system, including costs incidental and related thereto. That to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the Board of Selectmen is authorized to borrow $300,000 under and pursuant to Chapter 44, Section 71 and 815 of the General Laws as amended or any other enabling authority and to issue bonds or notes of the town therefore and that the Board of Selectmen be and hereby is authorized to accept and expend in addition to the foregoing appropriation, one or more grants or gifts from any other public or private funding source. This article requires a two-thirds vote. Mr. Frizzetti, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Steve Frizzetti, town meeting member, Precinct 7. As I look at this, we're looking to borrow $300,000. And in the previous article, we were going to borrow $500,000 for the water. I just went back to Article 16 and our debt service under Article 16 is $645,000. And that's from borrowing $500,000 just about every year. I'm not recommending we don't do this this year, but in the future, I recommend that we actually pay for it as we go, since it is a separate fund and you can just raise fee without needing a two and a half override. Instead of borrowing the money, I really recommend that in the future, we just pay for this outright. Thank you.
Does anyone else wish to speak to this article, 21? All those in favor of the recommendation of the warrant committee, say aye?
Aye!
Oppose, no?
No!
I declare a two-thirds vote. Article 22. Recommended that the sum of $914,000 be appropriated for the purpose of financing the capital needs of the town sewer system, including costs incidental and related thereto. That to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the Board of Selectmen is authorized to borrow $914,000 under and pursuant to Chapter 44, Section 8, Para 5 of the General Laws as amended or any other enabling authority and to issue bonds or notes of the town therefore and that the Board of Selectmen may and hereby is authorized to accept and expend in addition to the foregoing appropriation, one or more grants or gifts from the Massachusetts Water Resources Authority or any other public or private funding source. This article requires a two-thirds vote. Would anyone like to speak to it? Seeing none, all those in favor of the recommendation of the warrant committee, say aye?
Aye!
Oppose, no?
No!
I declare a two-thirds vote. Article 23. Recommended that the town vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen during fiscal year 2017 to accept on behalf of the town, except with respect to real property that is located in a business district or on which a multifamily dwelling consisting of more than six units is constructed or proposed to be constructed, any and all easements for any of the following purposes: roads, sidewalks, vehicular and/or pedestrian access or passage, drainage and utilities, and to abandon or relocate easements acquired for any of the foregoing purposes, provided however that such authorization shall pertain only to easements accepted, abandoned or relocated at no cost to the town. This article requires a two-thirds vote. Would anyone like to speak to it? Mr. Mullen?
Peter Mullen, Precinct 2. As I understand the article, it's authorizing the Board of Selectmen to accept easements. I'm wondering why there's an exception in it for business properties and for multifamily unit properties?
Thank you. Chair recognizes Mr. Hurley.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This has been a standing article for a couple of years now and there was some concern expressed at town meeting the first time that we proposed it. It's really meant just when DPW does paving projects, sometimes there are temporary easements that are taken. It does not authorize us to expend any money for the taking of easements, but it allows us to basically go on somebody else's property while doing those projects. There was some concern because of certain projects being proposed that there was some concern about this article, so we scoped out the commercial properties and the larger residential properties.
Would anyone else like to speak to this article? All those in favor of the recommendation of the warrant committee, say aye?
Aye!
Oppose, no? It's unanimous. Article 24. Recommended that the town vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to acquire on behalf of the town by gift purchase eminent domain or otherwise and on such conditions as the Board of Selectmen shall determine, temporary and/or permanent easements for the purpose of constructing new sidewalks and wheelchair ramps and transitions thereto as part of the East Milton Square Reconstruction Federal Aid Project as administered by the Massachusetts Department of Transportation. Said easement areas are located within property on Adam Street, Granite Avenue, Bryant Avenue, Boulevard Street, Edge Hill Road, Hollis Street and Bassett Street in the vicinity of the East Milton Deck and are shown on a preliminary plan set, a copy of which is on file with the Milton Department of Public Works and further that the town vote no appropriation under this article. Mr. Lynch, do you have any comments on this article?
I'd be so bold to say that we're encouraged to get our ducks in a row prior to the project actually moving forward and one of the last stumbling blocks typically is the acquisition of right-of-way. Federal Highway Administration requires that the town secure right-of-way for the purposes of carrying out the project. And in this instance, we have sidewalks that are right up to storefronts and what we're really looking at is transitions right up to those properties where the easements are just temporary in nature. But if we don't have it in place, it could be a delay until a future town meeting and we certainly don't want to throw any delays up on this project's momentum.
Would anyone like to speak to this article that requires a two-thirds vote? All those in favor of the recommendation of the warrant committee, say aye?
Aye!
Oppose, no? It's unanimous. So, folks, it's hitting 10 o'clock. I'm on a roll. I'm happy to keep going. If you'd like to try to keep moving, I get a sense the body wants to keep moving. Well, we'll keep moving. Article 25. To see what sum of money... Pardon me. Recommended that the town appropriate the amount shown in the following tabulations under the heading "Recommendation." I'll just get to the headline. Total Board of Health, $187,369 and that to meet said appropriation, the sum of $182,144 be raised from the tax levy and that the sum of $5,225 be raised from funds certified by the Department of Revenue as free cash. Would anyone like to speak to this motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the recommendation of the warrant committee, say aye?
Aye!
Oppose, no? The motion carries. Article 26. Recommended that the town appropriate the amount shown in the following tabulation under the heading "Recommendations." I'll get to the subtotal. Total library, $1,340,787 and that to meet said appropriation, the sum of $1,328,747 be raised from the tax levy and that the sum of $12,040 be raised from funds certified by the Department of Revenue as free cash. Does anyone wish to speak to this motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the recommendation of the warrant committee, say aye?
Aye!
Oppose, no? The vote's unanimous. Article 27. Recommended that the town... Pardon me? Mr. McLean?
Thank you. May I suggest that we postpone discussion and voting on the cemetery budget until tomorrow? We received word today from the cemetery that due to a very recent staffing change, we need to relook at their budget. So we need a few hours tomorrow to do that.
So moved. Any discussion on postponing Article 27 until tomorrow, May 3? So moved. Any discussion on postponing Article 27 until tomorrow, May 3? All in favor of the motion to postpone till tomorrow, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. The motion carries. We'll defer Article 27 to tomorrow. Article 28, recommended that the town authorize the continued use of the Park and Recreation Revolving Fund pursuant to the provisions of Chapter 18 of the general bylaws of the town, and that the town appropriate the amount shown in the following tabulation under the heading "Recommendations." I'll go to the total. Total parks and recreation, $461,675, and that to meet said appropriation, the sum of $461,675 be raised from the tax levy. Would anyone like to speak to this article? Seeing none, all those in favor of the recommendation of the warrant committee, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. It's unanimous. Article 29. Now, Mr. Moderator?
I have a statement, schools, I think our line of funding will have a presentation, a lot of discussion at the late hour. I'd like to make a motion to adjourn to reconvene until tomorrow evening. Oh, postponed it. I was, pardon me? Yeah, so apologize, Mr. Moderator, I apologize. Good point, rather than just adjourn, I would recommend you to postpone this budget until tomorrow night, perhaps to pick up some that we could finish in a timely fashion.
So you're making a recommendation, a motion that we postpone Article 29 till tomorrow, May 3?
That's correct.
It's been seconded. Any discussion on the motion? All in, yes, Mr. Walker, is recognized.
Schools would heartily accept that recommendation.
Let the record show, heartily was used. Anyone else speak to the motion to postpone? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Article 29 is postponed till May 3. Carrying on, Article 30, recommended that the sum of $909,984 be appropriated for the purpose set forth in this article, and that to meet said appropriation, the sum of $909,984 be raised from the tax levy, as for the Blue Hills Regional Technical School, for a total of $909,984. Does anyone wish to speak to this motion? We do, I think, have the superintendent here, and I don't know if our Blue Hills Technical School rep is here tonight. I think he was scheduled to be here tomorrow. Is that right? Tomorrow. If there's any follow-up questions, we could certainly make arrangements. Seeing none, all those in favor of the recommendation of the warrant committee, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. It's unanimous. Article 31, recommended that the town appropriate the amount shown in the following tabulation under the heading "Recommendation." I'll go to the total. Total consolidated facilities, $966,499, and that to meet said appropriation, the sum of $887,999 be raised from the tax levy, and that the sum of $78,500 be raised from funds certified by the Department of Revenue as free cash. Would anyone like to speak to this motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the recommendation of the warrant committee, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. It's unanimous. Article 32, recommended that the town appropriate the amount shown in the following tabulation under the heading "Recommended." Total interest and maturing debt, $3,936,524, and that to meet said appropriation, the following sums be applied: $221,371 from funds raised from the overlay reserve, and the remainder of $3,715,153 from the tax levy. Anyone wish to speak to this motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the recommendation of the warrant committee, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. It's unanimous. Article 33, recommended that the town appropriate the amount shown in the following tabulation under the heading "Recommendation," a grand total of $177,342, and that to meet said appropriations, the sum of $111,337 be raised from funds certified by the Department of Revenue as free cash, and the balance of $66,500 be raised from the tax levy. This requires a two-thirds majority vote. Would anyone like to speak to this motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the recommendation of the warrant committee, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion is unanimous. We're moving now. Article 34, recommended that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $153,276 for the purposes set forth in this article, and that to meet said appropriation, the sum of $153,276 is to be raised from funds certified by the Department of Revenue as free cash. Would anyone like to speak to Article 34? Seeing none, all those in favor of the recommendation of the warrant committee, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. It's unanimous. Article 35, recommended that the town appropriate the sum of $622,921 for the Reserve Fund for extraordinary or unforeseen expenditures, for the 12-month period beginning July 1, 2016, and that to meet said appropriation, the sum of $225,476 is to be raised from the tax levy, and $397,445 be transferred from Article 39, Annual Town Meeting, 2015 Reserve Fund. Would anyone like to speak to this article? Is anyone awake? Yes, they're all awake. Seeing none, all those in favor of the recommendation of the warrant committee, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Just checking. I see a lot of heads going back on the seats there, but we'll keep going. Article 36, recommended that the town continue the revolving funds created under Chapter 44, Section 53 E and a half of the Massachusetts General Laws and established by voters of the annual town meeting as indicated below. I'll just hit the highlights. Board of Park Commissioners, $100,000. Board of Library Trustees, $65,000. Board of Selectmen, $1,000. Board of Health, $30,000. Board of Library Trustees, $25,000. Cemetery Department, $60,000. Conservation Commission, $15,000. Board of Selectmen, $25,000. Does anyone wish to speak to this article? Seeing none, all those in favor of the recommendation of the warrant committee, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Article 36 passes. Article 37, recommended that the town vote to appropriate $5,000 to the Affordable Housing Trust, and that to meet said appropriation, the sum of $5,000 be raised from funds certified by the Department of Revenue as free cash. Does anyone want to speak to this article? Seeing none, all those in favor of the recommendation of the warrant committee, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. It's unanimous. Article 38, recommended that the town vote to transfer care, custody, and control of the land described to the board of selectmen, a parcel of land on Alvin Avenue, containing approximately .215 acres, or approximately 9,380 square feet, and shown on the town of Milton's assessor's maps as Section G, Block 12, Lot 19, which I'm sure is a page-turner. Does anyone wish to speak to this article? Yes, Chairman Hurley.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Just to explain what this article's all about, there is land at the end of Alvin Ave, which the Affordable Housing Trust had identified, it came to our attention, that it was there, it was about 10,000 square feet, and we had had conversations with Habitat Humanities, with the possibility of putting a Habitat house, or maybe two houses, on that lot. It later came to our attention that a water main runs through that, and a sewer line runs directly through that property, making it probably unbuildable. So, at this point, the reason the article is still there is, it's property that the town has owned since the mid-'30s. We can find that nobody appears to have care and custody of it at this point. We don't know how it was acquired. We thought it might have been tax title property, but according to the treasurer, it's not on his list of tax title properties. So just so that somebody has care and custody, for now, we turn it over to the board of selectmen, you know, which most property winds up care and custody of, so that's the purpose of the article.
You recognize her.
Jim McCall, of Town Treasurer. On this particular article, I'd like to offer an amendment. Instead of putting Affordable Housing Trust, could we put the Parks Department? The Parks Department has been taking care of this lot of land for the last 30 years or so. There is three sewer lines that run through it, also an underwater culvert, so that the lot itself is unbuildable. Thank you.
We have a motion been seconded. Mr. McLean, recognized?
Just to clarify, instead of Affordable Housing Trust, I think you mean instead of the board of selectmen, you wanted to go to the Parks Department.
Does anyone wish to speak to, so does everyone understand the motion as it has been made? Mr. Philiny, recognized? You have a question?
Yes.
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 I think you're saying that it requires a two-thirds vote. Are you aware of that?
Yes.
You are? Okay.
Yes.
All right.
The motion requires a two-thirds vote, yeah.
I think we're starting to push it again, yeah. Push it out in here.
Yeah, right.
Folks, this will be our last one of the night. I think I've got some clarity from Town Council, and let me see if I get this correct. So, according to Council, there's two parts of this vote. As you can see in the article, this written in the normal text, it's the fact that we are authorizing the board of selectmen to convey this to the Milton Affordable Housing Trust, and that specific notice has been put out to all the citizens. To convey it now elsewhere, Council is advising would be beyond the scope of this article, because they have not been, the town has not been notified of such a transfer. So, per that, I would have to rule the scope of this motion, this article, this motion outside the scope of the article. Did that make sense?
Yes.
There's that voice again. Now, would anyone else like to speak to this article? Yes, sir, you're recognized.
I'm Jim Coyle. I live in East Milton, right near Andrews Park there, and I think it'd be a shame to have it for any other use besides part of the park. I think it's this, I would urge to vote no on this article, and reassign that piece of property to somehow into the park solution. Right now, the cars, when there's games there, they all end up on House Street, blocking the street practically, and I think it's a serious parking and safety issue, and it should be a big mistake to go to this Affordable Housing Trust.
Mr. Hurley, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The recommendation of the warrant committee is not to transfer to the affordable housing trust. The Affordable Housing Trust accepts that, that the property is not a buildable lot, so there is no, there will be no further conveyance to the Affordable Housing Trust. It will just transfer care and custody to the board of selectmen, period, to be used as a vacant, you know, like many of the lots that care and custody is with the selectmen right now.
Mr. Walsh, you're recognized.
Mr. Moderator, Brian Walsh, proud Town Meeting Member from Precinct 8. I think I failed to identify myself the last time. I apologize. I would like to ask a question. If, in fact, the original intention of the article, which has created the awareness in the community, was about Affordable Housing Trust, and the determination now is, in fact, that it cannot go to them, I would like to know if the board of selectmen will be willing to, at a future date, recognizing, we can't change the wording here, willing to engage in a conversation with the Parks Department to potentially, in the future, transfer to the Parks Department.
Mr. Hurley.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. In all likelihood, the best use of that property would be some kind of a pocket park, so yes, absolutely, we would be more than willing to enter into discussions with the Park Department with respect to that.
Sounds like a resolution. Would anyone else like to speak to this article? It does require a two-thirds vote. All those in favor of the recommendation of the warrant committee, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no.
No.
I declare a two-thirds vote. With that, ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much for getting here at 7:30 promptly. By the way, the article passed a two-thirds vote. Getting here promptly at 7:30, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Aye.
Seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. See you tomorrow night. See you tomorrow night.